There are new faces in the room. And so what we've asked is we've asked the planning staff, Caitlin Audette, who has presented the original staff report, to come back in and give us a very brief synopsis of that staff report with talking about what this commission is being asked to recommend to the city council, and then the findings of facts and the proposed amendments that the planning department has. After Ms. Audette has spoken, I'm going to ask the applicant, Ms. Hecker, and anyone whom she would like to bring along with her, to give a brief discussion from the applicant's standpoint. And then the city solicitor is actually going to come and present very briefly on a specific issue that's been brought before us. And then we're going to open it up to public testimony. I would like everybody who's involved, everybody who's here who wants to speak to have the opportunity to speak. But recognize this commission has been here since 10 o'clock this morning, and we have been running all the way through. So I ask you, please, to keep your comments brief. And if somebody has said what you're going to say, please just stand up, give us your name, and say, "I agree with Speaker Blank." That'll help make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. If we're here until 7 o'clock because it drones on, I'm not going to, I'll cut you off if you're going like really, really long. But if everybody wants to speak and it takes us to 7 o'clock, that's what it's going to take us to do. We definitely want to conclude with this today. So with that, Ms. Audette, will you begin?
Good afternoon, commissioners. So I have today, I-
See, now you've got to speak up because we've got these fans going behind us.
Yeah.
Because all of a sudden it turned 90 degrees in here.
So I have the entire presentation that I shared last month. I am skipping most of that today, so we just jumped to a slide. I'm going to start off by answering some questions that were brought up at last month's hearing by both members of the public as well as yourselves. And then I'm going to go through the summary of findings and get to the recommendations. So if, let's start. So first off, one of the questions was about parking. So we requested, we asked the parking authority to provide us with some numbers about parking within the inner harbor. So they provided this, which is a breakdown of capacity within a quarter-mile radius of the Harbor Place. And so the on-street capacity, there's approximately 1,600 on-street parking spaces, the majority of which are metered, or about half and half, half of which are metered and half of which are within the residential parking program. And those are only partially available to visitors, usually two hours. And then there is on-street availability for the weekday daytime, roughly 190-metered spaces available. In the evening, slightly more. And on the weekend, roughly the same. And then for off-street capacity, there are approximately 12,700 off-street parking spaces within this vicinity. And for availability, it's greatly reduced during the weekday daytime with only 3,300 spaces available. In the evening, there's roughly 9,000 spaces available, and on weekends, 10,000 spaces available. So that's just to answer some questions that were brought up at the last meeting about parking in the area. Another question was about the process, so I am going to outline some of that now. So the legislative process. Legislation was introduced. It was referred to various agencies, including the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is reviewing it, that is today. And as part of this, there will be public testimony. They will schedule the review at the Economic and Community Development Committee of the City Council, and the committee hearing will be held. There will be public testimony available there. If approved by the committee, it'll go to second reader, then third reader. And if passed, the legislation goes to the mayor's desk for signature. The one bill for the charter amendment would then go before voters in November of 2024. Additional reviews that will take place, again, this was kind of at the request of the last month, just for the public to better understand the process and what kind of reviews the Harbor Place project would need to go through. So they'd have to go to Planning Commission, which is today, for land use. And there's public testimony available. These are the three bills that we've discussed. Again, they would likely, or they will come back for a master plan review, but that would have half-public testimony at a later date sometime in 2024. Additionally, they would need to meet zoning code, and that's why they are here today, in part to modify the zoning code so they can meet it fully. And part of the zoning code includes the design manual, which has some specific requirements for C-5 properties. They would also go through the Site Plan Review Committee, which is an inter-agency community, or committee, that reviews development at the concept level and provides direction to applicants regarding trash pickup, circulation, many other things. So DPW, DOT, Department of Planning, Parking Authority, Mayor's Office of Disabilities, those are just a number of people who attend Site Plan Review Committee. Next would be design review. So this will need to go to UDAP, which is a technical design review for master plan. It went once in November of 2023 and will go again sometime in early 2024. And will likely go one more time after that for a total of three master plan reviews. Each proposed building will also have to go for architectural review, typically two to three reviews by the panel. And again, note that there are specific design requirements for C-5 zoning districts and for properties along Pratt Street within C-5 areas. UDAP meetings are technical design reviews and are not public hearings, so there's no green highlighted area here. But we, as with most projects, planning staff asks the developers meet with the impacted communities through outreach and feedback, and we work with the developers to make sure that that feedback is incorporated as much as possible. There would also be Office of Sustainability review. So for projects over 5,000 square feet, they must meet the landscape manual, which has some very specific requirements. This site is within the floodplain, and it's required to meet critical area requirements for the floodplain. And then separate, the critical area management program includes all the land within the area, which is 1,000 feet off the Chesapeake Bay, and also there's 100-feet buffer. And so this must meet all of those requirements. Preservation review. This will trigger Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act because, through the use of state or federal funding. And for Harbor Places, will likely include archaeology and historic resource survey for determination of eligibility of the pavilion buildings and surrounding area. If there is a determination of adverse effect on historic properties, then mitigation will be required to minimize the adverse effect. This will also go to the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, or CHAP, where there will be public testimony for, as city code requires, that CHAP review and report on changes to city-owned properties and provide an advisory review on the impact of the development on historic resources. Additional agency reviews for piers, marinas, and related structures before a permit can be issued. Works be approved by the Army Corps of Engineer, the Maryland Department of the Environment, the Baltimore Fire Department, the Baltimore Department of Transportation, and the Baltimore Department of Public Works. Other city agency reviews, so DOT will require traffic studies and mitigation fees for street closings and right-of-way changes. DPW, by federal and state regulation, Baltimore City must manage the amount of stormwater runoff and ensure that it's cleaner when it reaches a waterway. And water-dependent uses in the critical area require conditional use approval by the BMZA. That's another opportunity for public testimony. Okay, so now I'm going to go, oh, hold on. No, 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 no. Oh, I updated this and it didn't get updated.
Oh, no.
Yeah, could you? It's in the T drive.
No, I'm going to work.
Okay. Sorry, I had collected all of my analysis on a few slides, but I will go back to those. Okay. So I'm just going to go over the analysis and not everything. For the Inner Harbor Park, staff finds that there are no recently adopted plans for the area contemplated residential or mixed use of the inner harbor. However, recent history has shown the need to diversify the harbor's economy and add population density that can support the area's commercial tenants. Allowing mixed-use buildings would limit any purely residential structures, which would arguably be the privatization of public access to portions of the harbor. And note that off-street parking is regulated by the zoning code and the Urban Renewal Plan, which do not allow surface parking lots and require screening and roofs for all parking garages. Additionally, C-5 zoning districts do not have a parking requirement, and there are, I think this was the line that got me in trouble last time, "A plethora of garages exist in the surrounding blocks," which we discussed with the Parking Authorities' report. Okay, so next, my analysis for the C-5 Inner Harbor Subdistrict Amendment. This is the alteration to the zoning code to change C-5IH. So the zoning category remains unique from other C-5 subdistricts in that it maintains no minimum building height, which none of the others have, and recognizes that development must be oriented to the waterfront. But with the change to none, those would be the only differences between that subdistrict and the other C-5 subdistricts. And then this was a note that the URP boundaries do not include a small section of C-5IH that extends east from the World Trade Center property, encompassing all of Pier 3 and Pier 4, which includes the National Aquarium and the power plant building, and that those piers would no longer have a maximum height limit, so we would need to be aware of that. And we'll get to that. Okay. Sorry. Okay, and then the analysis of the Urban Renewal Plan, this is a bit more detailed. So for changes to the land disposition portion, the proposed change would allow for specific development area boundaries to be modified to reflect changes to parcel lines. This is a necessary change as the inner harbor changes, as the current areas mimic the existing outdated buildings. For the size of the facilities, the proposed change to replace development limits with the underlying zoning is in keeping with standard practice of the Department of Planning to reduce confusion during development. For servicing, the proposed change is in keeping with the intent of the inner harbor as a lively, active area. Furthermore, under the current zoning code, outdoor display is allowable with some rules for any retail goods establishment, so it meets the current zoning. Development Area 13, which is the North Harbor Place Pavilion. So the proposed changes to add residential is supplemented by Exhibit C, the land use, which identifies development, that development area 13 would be commercial residential. The introduction of mixed use maintains the current level of access to the space, which is public through the commercial designation. The removal of the height limit does not impact the promenade, which is protected from development. The removal of the limit would also match the zoning directly across both Pratt and Light Streets. The creation of a separate task force within a URP is generally discouraged, as history has shown that these bodies are not sustainable in the long term. Instead, it would be good to clarify the process that the proposal must abide by and when public testimony input is required. For Development Area 14, this is the McKeldon Plaza area. The addition of commercial is supplemented by Exhibit C, again, the land use map, which identifies that Development Area 14 would be commercial-public. This, removing additionally, the request removes the limit on building construction, and staff finds that removing that and requiring the building construction be approved by the agency as long as it does not exceed three stories or a total of 20,000 gross square feet does not give the area the flexibility needed for unknown future development. The limit on commercial use within the Inner Harbor Park, which per the boundaries would include McKeldon Plaza once the spur road is removed, provide limits on potential development area, and that would suffice. Development Area 15A, this is the South Harbor Place Pavilion. The proposed change to add residential is supplemented by Exhibit C, land use, which identifies that Development Area 15A would be commercial residential. The introduction of mixed use maintains the current level of access to the space, which is public through the commercial uses. The removal of the height limit, again, does not impact the promenade, which is protected from development. The removal of the limit would also match zoning directly across both Pratt and Light Streets. The expansion of parking would not be of surface parking, which is prohibited. All parking would be shielded, and that alteration would not negatively impact public space. And the creation of a separate task force, as I stated before, is discouraged. Okay, so let me get back to my recommendation. Sorry for that issue. So staff recommends approval with amendments and a further recommendation that the commission explore the creation of a waterfront overlay for the inner harbor based on the other waterfront overlay areas within the city. This would allow for the eventual elimination of C-5IH zoning category, as well as the eventual repeal of the URP, which expires in 2040. And then these are the amendments that staff recommends, which is to remove the parking requirement of 3,04500 and instead utilize underlying zoning to strike the content of Section I, the minimum elevation for development, and replace with reference to floodplain and critical area requirements. For Development Area 14, remove proposed language limiting height and gross square footage for Development Areas 13 and 15A. Remove reference to UDAP and instead replace the ad hoc advisory task force with a requirement that all preliminary and final development plans must complete all required planning reviews, including but not limited to Planning Commission, Design Reviews, Site Plan Review Committee, and Environmental Reviews. To modify Appendix 1, the waterfront area controls, to include Lot 15, and to modify Exhibit F to include the pedestrian promenade along the entire harbor, and actually, the applicant has already done that. Any questions?
Awesome. Speed.
Is the removal of UDAP a new change since the last presentation, or that was always that way?
It was always that way, and it's not necessarily removing UDAP. It's not, it's just not putting UDAP in there. It's saying that it has to meet Planning Commission, UDAP, and all other required development reviews.
The way the proposed ordinance is written now, it just says UDAP. And, you know, the planning department's recommendation is to broaden that to include all potential design-
And the reason for that is that UDAP is not a public, is not an opportunity for public hearing, and we want to make sure there's an opportunity for public hearing within that.
Yes.
The last time we talked, I referenced your equity-
Yeah.
-sentence, the equity impact analysis, where you said that affordable housing would not, likely not be included to this. I just wanted you to up, and we asked the developer and he said that he would include this.
Yep, based on the legislation, I believe, recently passed, I'm not, yeah, they would meet that legislation as required.
I just want that language modified to not say that affordable housing would not be included to, for, to be more, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Audette. Okay, Ms. Hecker, and anyone whom you would like to bring from your team, AKA Mr. Bramble.
All right, I'm back. Thank you, can I start?
Your name?
My name is David Bramble. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, there you go. So good afternoon and thank you for having me. We're pleased to be in front of you again to discuss the Harbor Place project. Last time, we had some tech difficulties, which slowed us down with the AV system, but we're happy that you were willing to postpone the meeting, or continue the meeting, I should say, to ensure that everyone who wants to have a chance to speak gets to speak. Well, we think that's important. As I mentioned, my name is Dave Bramble. I'm the managing partner and one of the co-founders of MCB Real Estate, along with my partner, Peter Pinkard. I've been a Baltimore city resident for 47 years, and I still live in Madison Park in West Baltimore, on the west side, and I know how it feels to be excited about going to Harbor Place. And I think we all remember what this place, what Harbor Place meant to us, but it hasn't been that way for a really long time. And that's why Peter and I and the rest of the MCB team agreed to take on this very difficult work. This isn't a project that we have to do, but it is a project that we want to do, I've said that before, because it's super important. It is extremely important for the future of our city, a place I've always called home and that I call my own today. I want to, and just briefly, I want to remind everyone about how much initial engagement and listening we've done to date, and obviously, we still plan on more. As you heard, there's a lot of process and a lot of public process to be, to follow. But we've held open forums, which we opened to every neighborhood association and community development corporation in the entire city. We invited everybody, and we offered the chance to meet with any community association that wanted to meet with us. We have large meetings, starting at Reginald F. Lewis Museum. We did the Waxter Senior Center, meetings at Harbor Place, Coppin State, Federation for the Blind, and we had small dinners with folks who signed up to do those small dinners at Harbor Place. And we had youth workers working on our program, trying to help us think about how we could incorporate youth in our program, as well as knocking over 1,000 doors in various neighborhoods, not just the neighborhoods right around Harbor Place, but neighborhoods around the city to try to invite engagement. And as I like to point out, I'm pretty sure I'm the, we're the only development team ever to put signs on the sides of buses inviting people to come and talk to us and give us ideas and engage with us. And that allowed us to touch thousands of people. Over 90 neighborhoods were represented, and we, we really tried to go all out, and we know we're not done, but anyone who says we weren't doing community engagement simply was not paying attention. So we're here today to discuss a package of bills which we believe will enable us to restore the heart of our city. The overarching plan that governs the inner harbor, the Inner Harbor Renewal Plan, was established over a half a century ago, almost a half a century ago. And we've learned a lot about waterfront development and development in real estate since then. And now, since those rules are adopted, it's time to think about what a great waterfront city can be. And we studied cities around the world and discussed those within those community meetings as well. And where those cities around the world are reinventing their waterfronts, and we should be too, and that's what we're here for today. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration on this very important matter, and I'll turn it over to Caroline Hecker, who will discuss the bills and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr.? Are there any questions for Mr. Bramble from the commission? Thank you very much. Ms. Hecker?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Caroline Hecker Rosenberg-Martin Greenberg on behalf of the developer. I want to thank Ms. Audette for her very thorough and quick presentation. I'm not going to go through the details of the bills. We agree with the staff's analysis and the staff's recommendation. We support the proposed amendments. I wouldn't say we'd like to wordsmith the one about the approval process and removing UDAP and replacing it with language about the other agencies, but we certainly can work through that. You know, this legislation really is critical to establishing the flexibility that we need to think creatively about redesigning the waterfront here. But what I really want to talk about is, I want to spend a minute dispelling a few misconceptions that I keep hearing repeated, you know, in the news, in social media, just around town. And actually, one of which I noticed was in the update to the presentation. This is private property. The Harbor Place Pavilions are not city-owned. They're ground leased by the city to the development team here at MCB. They were, they were given by the city to the Rouse Company 50 years ago, but they are, they remain privately owned. They've changed hands several times, but as a result, you know, because they're city-owned, they're not subject to CHAP review, because again, they're private property.
I think you misspoke, but you said because they're city-owned.
They're not city-owned.
Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize. Moving too fast. And likewise, we're not asking for any city funding in connection with the project. There's been a number floating around the internet about, you know, $300 or $400 million in public funds that we're looking for. There will be public funding in the redevelopment of the promenade and the harbor. It's going to be state and federal funding. We're not asking for a TIF here. Of course, if the city wants to give us one, we're happy to take one, but we're not, we're not going to be applying for or asking for a TIF. There are promenade improvements that are going to need to be made as part of, you know, any, any project, whether or not we do this project, the promenade is in need of work. Our expectation is that the federal government will fund the promenade improvements. The federal government funded the original construction of the promenade 50 years ago. There were major renovations done 20-some years ago that were also paid for by the federal government, and our expectation is that there will be federal funding involved in those improvements, for, in connection with this project. Likewise, with the realignment of the streets, the public rights of way, there's, there's, you know, a red line project coming through, from the state, there's going to be state funding involved in, in that piece of it as well. The proposed legislation and the development plans that you've seen are completely consistent with everything that has been proposed and the plans that have been adopted and enacted for the last, you know, 50-some-odd years since the original Inner Harbor Project 1 Urban Renewal Plan was adopted by the city back in 1967. There've been a series of updates since then, and this is just an additional update on top of that to bring it current and to add a little bit more flexibility. Likewise, the, the plans are consistent with the Pratt Street 2.0 plan. There's been talk about the, the Calvert Street spur, or the swoop where it comes off, where Calvert Street comes off Light Street, and the removal of that. That's been in the downtown partnerships plans for at least the last 14 years. That's not new, that this just builds on existing plans. Also importantly, there is no proposed development south of Conway Street in this plan. There is no redevelopment of Rash Field or West Shore Park. And in fact, if anybody wanted to redevelop or create any development on those parcels, additional legislation, an additional charter amendment, and an additional referendum would be required. So there's a lot of, of political process that would be involved if anything south of Conway Street was going to happen. Nothing south of Conway Street is proposed here. Likewise, we're not planning to annex any portion of Light Street or Pratt Street. Those remain public rights of way. You probably have seen in the plans that they are proposed to be narrowed to accommodate public transit, bicycle transit, pedestrian lanes. It's, you know, there, there will be less vehicular traffic, and we think that's a choice the city should be making. I know this, this hearing today is not about design, and we're going to go through an extensive design review process, but we had sent over a couple of exhibits that I was hoping we could look at, just quickly to talk about, which we maybe don't have. We showed, we showed most of these at the last hearing, but just to like refresh everyone's memory, at the end of the day, we are going to be increasing the amount of parkland and open space and publicly accessible space from what currently exists by approximately 4.8 acres. There is currently about 13.9 acres of parkland and public space. We're going to end up with about 18.7 acres. Of that, about an acre is the Calvert Street spur, about another 1.3 acres is McKeldon Plaza. So we're getting 2.3 acres of new contiguous open space, plus additional open space on the new promenade and the elevated park space on the Sail Building. Similarly, the, the footprints of the new buildings are actually smaller than the footprints of the existing Harbor Place Pavilions. The current Pavilions occupy a footprint of a little over 117,000 square feet. At the end of the day, the new buildings will have a footprint collectively of about 115,000 square feet, so there will be more publicly accessible space on the ground plane than there exists today. Building heights in the new plan are lower than other nearby buildings, and we had a diagram that showed the relationship of, of the proposed residential buildings to other existing buildings, and, and the, the residential buildings on our plan are 355 feet. I think the tallest building is 414 Light Street, which is about 500 and some feet high, I want to say 529 feet high, so it's considerably lower than, than adjacent building heights. The charter amendment, which we've talked a little bit about, confirms that commercial uses include the uses that are already permitted within the commercial district in, in the C-5IH zone, which include multifamily residential and off-street parking. Importantly, on the off-street parking piece, as Caitlin mentioned, off-street parking has to be screened from public view under the Urban Renewal Plan and the city's design standards. We're not going to have surface parking lots, we're not going to have garages. It has to be either internal to the building or below grade. And then finally, if the charter amendment is approved, it is still going to be subject to a referendum of the city voters. So at the end of the day, the voters in Baltimore will have the ultimate say in whether this gets developed. So I know that was quick, I know I talk fast, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know you also have been here all day.
No, real quickly, I want to point out that the existing World Trade Center site is immediately adjacent to the private lands that are going to be developed, and if I'm not mistaken, that building is 450 feet tall.
I think that's about right, yeah.
You had mentioned 414 Light Street, which I respect, on the south side of the development. I just wanted to point out that we also have the World Trade Center site, which is within the Inner Harbor Urban Renewal Plan, that is 450 feet.
Thank you, yes.
There was one other thing, oh, and I think it's also important to note that the charter amendment is to increase the size of that private land within the public space, correct?
Yes, yes, it increases the size of the ground lease parcel.
And if for some reason the Baltimore city residents do not approve that in the referendum, the applicant is still able to come back in and propose whatever they want within the existing footprint.
That is true, yes.
So, okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Hecker from the commission? Thank you very much, Ms. Hecker. I believe a Stephen Salisbury. Mr. Salisbury, if you would like to come up and provide us with your thoughts on the, from the Law Department?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Stephen Salisbury, I'm the deputy city solicitor. We were asked, we, we're just here to present on one very narrow issue, and that is with respect to the charter amendment. We wanted to just reiterate that the language of the charter amendment would not permit any development south of Conway Street. That includes the Rash Field area. I think there may have been some confusion about the synopsis portion of the amendment, but if you read the language of the amendment itself, it's very clearly delineates that that development would be north of Conway. So we just wanted to speak to that. I know there may have been some confusion around that, and we wanted to clarify that from, from the Law Department.
Are there any questions for Mr. Salisbury, Councilman? Are there any questions for Mr. Salisbury, Councilman?
Deputy Solicitor, I want to thank you for coming at my request. There's been some confusion, and I just want to expand on this to make it clear in absolutely no uncertain terms. When a bill is introduced, there's what's known as a short title, and then there is a summary of the bill that the Department of Legislative Reference produces. That is non-operative language, meaning nothing in that summary actually goes into the law. It is just a description of what is in the actual law. The law itself does not address anything or permit anything to occur south of East Conway Street. I just want to confirm that the way that I've said it is what you were saying earlier. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And to ensure that there's no further confusion, I plan to, when the, when the bills are heard in the city council, I plan to amend that summary to remove, remove that confusion, confusing language around Rash Field. From a legal perspective, is there any reason why law department would not approve an amendment as such for form and legal sufficiency?
No, we, we would approve that for form and legal sufficiency. And I'd go even farther and just say, even if you didn't, it's just the synopsis. So the operative language already doesn't allow that. But absolutely, the law department is, you know, it, it makes sense to try and clarify that so everybody understands. And law department is always happy to work with, you know, whomever about making sure that the language accurately reflects the intention of the council.
So I, I appreciate the response, and I recognize that the actual operative language does not, does not permit any development south of East Conway Street, nonetheless to ensure that my constituents and citizens across the city feel comfortable because of the complexity, because we have three layers of land use here governing this area. We have the underlying zoning. We have the urban renewal plan. And then we have a very unique feature in that there are very limited geographic areas in the city. The inner harbor happens to be one of them that has provisions in the charter. So because of the complexity of that, I want to ensure that we're making this as simple as humanly possible for everyone and alleviating any concerns that may exist that it is actually an issue when it is not. So I do plan to introduce that amendment when these bills get to the city council so that we can alleviate those concerns. Thank you.
Understood.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Salisbury? Yes?
I have a question about improvements south of Conway, because the, the, the documents that we've seen so far would suggest that the waterfront promenade would maybe want to be improved at the same time as work around Harbor Place. And I understand that's state funding and federal funding, but I wasn't sure how that is coordinated with the overall master plan for redevelopment.
I'll take a, Mr. Chairman, if I may, take a first stab at that. And then, Mr. Tezo, I'll ask you to chime in to help me with Commissioner McCouch's The impetus behind this current discussion around south of East Conway Street is with respect to what we would consider improvements of land, specifically building a structure. This would not impact improvements to the promenade itself as part of federal funding to make renovations to the existing promenade. If I explain that correctly?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Was your question that, or was your question, when the promenade improvements are done, what is the extent of? Was your question, when the promenade improvements are done, what is the extent of those?
Well, that's a related question. I'm not sure that I've ever seen a boundary suggesting, you know, where one ends and one begins. But I, I'm comfortable with the idea that there is state and federal funding for a comprehensive renovation of the promenade. I would hate to see the sort of juncture where we have 50-year-old promenade running up against some very dramatic proposals.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, which is one point of clarification. I would say on the promenade, the expectation is that will, that will be fully funded by the federal government and the federal government alone. But I think that the, if there's one thing that we can, everyone in this room can agree on, it's that one of our greatest assets in Baltimore City, if not our greatest asset, is the water. So ensuring that we have a world-class promenade that most importantly provides 100.0% public access and is ADA compliant and allows every person in our city, as well as visitors, to enjoy that amenity, I think is critically important. So separate from this discussion, they're, they're just, you know, we're talking about it in the middle branch, near Cherry Hill with that park. So there are efforts all across the, the city and, and, you know, my take on it, and I think this, the, I won't speak for the development team, but we want to improve as much of that promenade as possible to get as close to, to that 100% to ensure that accessibility for the public.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Salisbury? Thank you very much. Just for everybody's edification, if you were not here at our last hearing, the planning commission is strictly making recommendations on these back to the city council. We are not the final determining body. So these, all three of these bills, you know, went through the staff review. They're going through this process, and we will make recommendations back to the city council. With that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. I would first like to call on Mr. Leon Bridges. Mr. Bridges, if you're here, the reason why I'm asking Mr. Bridges is because he actually showed up at 10 o'clock, and he's, he is that committed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Leon Bridges. I'm a retired architect and planner. I'm a fellow of the American Institute of Architects and an emeritus member of the National Organization of Minority Architects. I have, I'm proud to say I have, in my practice, received a national citation from the American Institute of Architects for community architecture and planning. This was done in Seattle. It was a very massive project. I also was a planner for the, the urban, the urban plan, up to the urban, the urban plan. That's what it's called. My views are conditioned on, on two very, very, I believe, strong principles. And by that, I am appearing for you in opposition, no, check that, asking for you to table the decision on the three bills that are, are before you. First, MCB should have a reputable real estate economic analysis. I don't think one exists. Second, MCB should have in hand, in hand, public monies for this project. We don't need another Morris mechanic downtown. There's 900 apartment units, I'm told, but the Downtown Partnership says that the vacancy rate is 24%. The Downtown Partnership says that the vacancy rate for office space is 34%. Now, it's my understanding that Acquisition Corp. had several vendors ready to occupy Harbor Place. For some reason, MCB has seen it to raise rents or whatever to force them out. Now regarding the plan, the actual plan, we were told earlier that the vision of Harbor Place would be, would reflect Baltimore. The vision of the development reflects Baltimore. Well, it seems to me that vision has been, has been lost. The two apartment towers are encroaching upon existing public land and would hamper the visual enjoyment currently offered to pedestrians along the waterfront. The floating park or walkway further reduces the actual inner harbor water space and experience rather than trying to enhance its presence and public use. The Sail Building turns its back on Pratt Street, and its east and west facades are an unimaginable delineation of facades. It's took my attention that Bramble owns the development rights on the former News American site. Well, if he wants to build high rises, let him build on that site. However, MCB is to be applauded. They're to be applauded for hiring one of the most skilled architectural firms in the world to work on this plan. Outstanding firm. But it appears that MCB is controlling the design with the sole purpose of ensuring a comfortable pro forma for lenders. That's excerpted from the newspaper by architect Amber Windlin. Rather than letting the architects come forth with further studies and further schemes, this project should not be viewed as a slam dunk. I'm very concerned with the rush to approve this project. It shouldn't be a breconite speed of approval for. You should take the time as a planning commission and other organizations within the city to really look forward to an outstanding design. We have world-class architects in this city, world-class, and overall, they do not approve of the design as presented by MCB. It's necessary to involve their expertise as architects and planners. You are commission members. You're not architects, and you're not planners, but you have the oversight to make sure that the design will, in fact, resemble the vision of Baltimore. In the paper you may have read, where architect Windlin has proposed an international design competition. Wow. That's an outstanding recommendation. It's outstanding because it brings to fore international architects from around the world who would give their opinions as to the best design. You should give this serious consideration. Now, in conclusion, I hold my statements with the sincerity that they've been given and understanding of their importance. As stated in my opening, the one overriding concern of this commission and city of Baltimore is prior to any action which will result in another Morris mechanic to be, to, for MCB to present to you a bona fide real estate analysis that supports their design. I haven't seen it. It's not my purview to see everything they do, but it would be nice to know if one exists. And the second thing is, where is the money? Let them show you the money in hand. I'm available for any comments or questions you may have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bridges. Yes, Councilman Costello.
Mr. Bridges, correct? Did I say your name? Mr. Bridges, right?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridge?
Yes.
Yes. I wanted to, I wanted to thank you for spending the entire day here waiting to participate. That is extremely admirable. I really appreciate it. And I, I wanted to make a comment. You referenced a letter to the editor that was produced by an architect, Ms. Amber Lindlin, I believe.
Yes.
And she made a recommendation to have an international design competition.
Yes.
And I wanted to tell you how much I agree with that recommendation. I think that's a phenomenal idea. And I'm pleased to say, I, I wish that someone had reached out, but, to the development team, but they did conduct an international design competition with five world-renowned architects in the design of, of the Sail Building. And I am certainly not an architect, so I recognize that much of that is subjective, and that's one of the reasons I will never be appointed to UDAP, which is the, the forum for that. But, but nonetheless, I, I wanted to say I agree with that, and I do appreciate you taking the time to spend the day with us to, to give this important feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. It would save, it would cost more time for MCB if we had the competition, but it would save them a lot of money.
I think it's important, what Mr. Costello, Councilman Costello was saying, that a competition was had for the, what was currently the Pratt Street Pavilion.
That's right.
So there was an international competition for that one building. Is that correct?
Yes. That's right. Thank you.
Well, hold on real quickly. Are there any other questions?
There may be more questions. Sorry, sir.
Just want to make sure. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bridges? Anyone from the commission? Thank you very much, sir. Is a Mac Campbell here?
I am not Mac Campbell, but I'm Phil Costa. I'm the deputy director at the Baltimore Convention Center. Unfortunately, just about 10 minutes ago, Mac had to run out, and so I am pinch hitting on his behalf. As I said, I'm Phil Costa, deputy director at the Convention Center, but I'm here to read this testimony on behalf of Mac.
Please.
And so...
Hopefully it's short.
What's that?
I said, hopefully it's short.
It is, one page. So again, this is on, on behalf of Mac Campbell, the executive director at the Baltimore Convention Center. I wish to offer my support for Agenda Item 14 and the MCB Real Estate Development Timeline for Harbor Place. My primary focus is to emphasize the critical need for a revitalized inner harbor to attract convention business to Baltimore. Since my return to the Convention Center as executive director in January 2023, there's been an unparalleled amount of momentum, passion, and collaboration among business and civic leaders around what will be the next Baltimore Renaissance. The $6.5 billion and growing of capital investment in downtown requires everyone to work in sync to ensure cohesive downtown product for citizens and guests. One of, if not the, most important pieces of that puzzle is the work being done surrounding Harbor Place. I am acutely aware of the challenges Baltimore faces in maintaining its status as a premier destination for national and regional conventions. The current state of the inner harbor directly impacts Baltimore's ability to attract and retain convention business, and the center is already witnessing the unfortunate loss of significant events and at times, an insurmountable climb to bring new events when competing on a national stage. The continued degradation of Baltimore's downtown product and its resulting lack of vibrancy at the street level is threatening the city's reputation and the Baltimore Convention Center's ability to fulfill its mission of generating positive economic impact, creating jobs, and serving the community. The Harbors... The Harbor Place redevelopment is a pivotal, pivotal step towards revitalizing not just the inner harbor, but all of downtown and ensuring Baltimore's appeal to convention organizers. The proposed project is not merely about infrastructure. It signifies a commitment to creating a vibrant and welcoming atmosphere, which is a key demand from convention clients. The center has already seen eyes perk up, more phone calls returned, and emails responded to when the proposed MCB project is discussed. In my opinion, the city cannot afford to delay the revitalization of the inner harbor. The proposed pan, plan is a catalyst for Baltimore's resurgence as a leading convention destination. The loss of business the center is currently experiencing underscores the urgency of moving forward. I implore the planning commission to move Bills 12-0444, 0446, and 0448 favorably without delay to ensure that the citizens of Baltimore have the opportunity to vote in November on the referendum surrounding the project.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker from the commission?
Thank you.
All right. That's all I had on the, on the list that I was given. So it's open to anyone who would like to stand up and speak. I would suggest that you just step up. If you want to get in the queue, get in the queue, or start a queue.
Check it.
Please.
Jester move to have a timer or some sort for testimony?
Again, I, I don't want to cut anybody off. We've got, if, if you would take about two or three minutes, that would be great. With this, we'll be out of here by midnight. So, sir.
My name is Michael Saunders. I'm a 48-year resident of Baltimore, with the exception of 11 months I lived in Atlanta, Georgia, but I rushed back home.
Well, forgive me for that.
Yeah, yeah. So, for me, the question is, why? First, why does this matter so much to me? My dad was one of the original painters down at the gallery in the opening project. I remember when we went down and saw it and saw the higher beams and I was at awe, but it didn't stop there. When I ran out of funding after four semesters at University of Maryland College Park, I came back home and got a job at the Renaissance Harbor Place Hotel. I worked there for about three years, and then I started a car service when I found out that I was going to be a father. And when I did that, we based it and ran it out of the Renaissance Harbor Place Hotel. So I have a lot of my life based at that western of the harbor. It was western of the harbor that helped us build this business, and we were fortunate enough to work out the Renaissance and deal with all the major league baseball teams that came into Baltimore. I drove Hall of Famers for 10 years. The last several years of this, of our business, nobody came to the western of the harbor. They didn't stay at the Harbor Place. They were pretty much centralized at Harbor East. I was also fortunate enough to be paid to travel with these team, specific players, to drive their families around in other cities. We went to cities like LA, Seattle, Houston, Chicago, New York, Boston, Toronto, lots of beautiful waterfronts. But when we arrived in those cities and I drove their, their families there, I met them there, they would always say, why isn't it the same in Baltimore? We have all this waterfront space. Why is it the same? We're stuck at the Harbor East over at Four Seasons. And that was an overwhelming sentiment. Imagine that, right? The visiting teams and families no longer wanted to spend time at the end of the harbor. Everybody wanted to be there. My next question, though, would be, why MCB? Well, I would say for the same reasons that I was paid to travel to the other cities that, that I drove to to drive those families, trust. Let's begin with their team. They are largely made up of sons and daughters of Baltimore that are connected to Baltimore in very personal ways, who better to be stewards of change that we need at the western of the harbor. When I first met with Dave, it was coffee-related, but not about the Harbor Place. And at the end of the meeting, he looked me in the eyes, he told me what he would do for me and what he would not do for me. He shook hands and he kept his word. But since the opportunity popped up for us to go into Harbor Place, MCB has been a great partner for us. My children are now excited about us opening up this business at the end of harbor. This area has put my family legacy connected to it. This multi-phase, multi-year, mixed-use project not only gives my family legacy opportunity to grow, but also provides other city residents the same opportunity. It comes in the form of jobs with rebuilding and infrastructure with entrepreneurship and in the forms of memories formed from the countless hours and days enjoyed, all at the redeveloped western, in, in our harbor. So again, why MCB? MCB has leadership you can trust. And as a son of Baltimore, I trust that this project will help many of my talented brothers and sisters and that Baltimore City as a whole should support the growth of this project. In conclusion.
Thank you.
I heard earlier that we need to table this and give this more time to deliberate. The time taken and wasted is how my emotional home got to the state that it is in. We need to hurry up and get this done. And finally, thank you, MCB, for being more than fair in my licensing agreement and making sure that a small local business like Matriarch Coffee can survive at the harbor.
Thank you very much. That's great. Wait, just, real quickly, anybody have any questions? By the way, anybody who speaks, just step there until we say. Anybody have any questions? Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Allen?
What is the name of your business again?
Matriarch Coffee.
Matriarch?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next.
Looks like I need a T-shirt. Commission, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm David Ben. I have been an architect and urban designer for too long in Baltimore City, 40 years. And my waterfront experience goes back to the 1980s. I have been a long-term chair of the Harbor Promenade Committee, past board member of the Baltimore Waterfront Partnership, board member of the International Waterfront Center, led waterfront master plan efforts like the PUD rezoning master plan of the Allied Signal Site. So I know what's involved here, and so I, I'd like to say a bunch of things, but I'm going to try to whittle it down. While I commend the effort to date, I think that a lot of it's very hopeful. And, but I don't know that we can pin our, our zoning and bills like this on hopes. I like the pedestrian friend list of the streets. I like integrating McKeldin Square. Those are winners. I think the involvement of the community was very good so far. However, I think that community involvement was very tentative. It was the very early part, and there's lots of follow-up that needs to happen. So I would like to say that Bills 04446, 048 should be tabled by this board until we do very careful, thorough plans and controls for our public realm with a strong, really strong vision that will most benefit the city for years to come. I'm a ser, a series of questions I'd like to put forward. One of those is, how can we look at enough alternatives to make sure that we have the very strongest visionary approach? This one we have was a huge international example for 50-plus years. And we've even had one that's been published recently with two very nice slender towers in a very different position, not so big as these ones. This, I think, a very, much stronger concept that would not work with this legislation as it's proposed. And I think that's what Leon Bridges is talking about. He's talking about the idea for a vision for the whole thing, not just a competition for one site. There needs to be a strong vision for the whole. Basic questions. Should public open space be traded for private development without any contribution towards the public costs of the promenade or the parks? You know, we're giving up land. Does high-income housing in a public park really provide much benefit to the security and activity of the park? When downtown has so many vacant buildings and lots nearby, should we be building this much housing that could discourage demand elsewhere? Does high-rise construction in this site benefit the city or neighborhood by adding drama to the skyline, connections used to our surroundings? You mentioned the World Trade Center breaking the public park. Everything's low in that public park with a setback of higher buildings around it, except for that. But that was the idea. It was a landmark. It was a punctuation mark. So it's a very different idea to put really big buildings in there. And, you know, how much, in the light of this, the new zoning allows, laws, really biggest problem is they can, they do little to control height, use type, or density. So what happens when things typically change? It happens all the time. The city will not have the ability to control it. I'll stop.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ben? Yes.
I just, thank you. I appreciate you showing up and testifying. Appreciate a lot of what you said. I do want to just point out one clarification, that this is not taking public land and turning it private. The, the parcels that we're talking about have been private property and are continuing to be private.
But we are turning some of the public right of way into additional land for private use.
That, that land is being used for, for park space. So when we're talking about McKeldin Plaza and Development Parcel Number 14 in the URP, I, I do think that's important.
We are, we are expanding private development into the public realm.
And we're, we're taking something that was proposed in 2008 or 2009 before anyone, 15 years ago, before anyone thought we were going to be having this conversation, which was the vision of the Downtown Partnership to eliminate the Calvert Street spur because it is a pedestrian death trap. And we're talking about converting that to green public space that, that can...
But it's true, we're also contributing additional private, or taking...
Yeah, let's just make sure that, because this is going to go back and forth. What I think you're saying, which I think is correct, which is the purpose of the public referendum, is the amount of private space that is currently in the inner harbor is plus or minus 3.3 acres. And it will be increased to...
4.7.
4.5 or whatever it may be. So there, yes, there is an increase in, in pu, in private development space as part of this proposal. That's the purpose of the referendum. What I think has also been said is there is also a commensurate increase in public space with the inclusion of the Calvert Street and the inclusion of McKeldin Square, which is following up on, you know, plans from Downtown Partnership and the Harbor, Inner Harbor 2.0 and a variety of other studies that have been done.
Yeah.
So just, so I, you're both right. Yes, there's an increase in private, and yes, there's an increase in public.
Yeah, and I, let me clarify, and thank you for that clarification, Mr. Chairman. That was helpful. There, there was an artifact that was going to be displayed that had been requested by planning, but it, I think the intention of my comment here is that the footprint is the same. So there's a, there's a graphic that illustrates the overlay of the existing structures and the modification from, of the ground leased area from 3.2 to 4.5 acres and what the footprint of the new proposed buildings would be. That, that was the point I was trying to make, and I appreciate my chairman helping me to, to kind of clarify that.
But you're still confusing me, because if the footprint is remaining the same, how do they getting 1.5 more acres?
The, the footprint of the building, they are not building on, they are not proposing to build on the total sum of the, the ground leased area. That's, that's why. The, the footprint is the same as what exists today versus what is being proposed.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking...
But I think we're saying the same thing, just differently.
The big question is, can there be more of a contribution towards the public realm by this private development?
And I think that point is well-taken. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Ben? Thank you, sir.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Kevin Wallace. I'm a 25-years resident here in Baltimore City and business owner. And today, my point going to be extremely small, is going to be based on affordability. Small point. I'm the owner of Collegiate Luxe, merchandising company that supports CIA.
That's a nice jacket.
We made these in Baltimore. And so today, the HBCU store is located at the Harbor Place. And this is the only store in the US, HBCU store, that supply all 13 schools for the CIA that's coming up, competition late February. We want to take the time out today to thank, to thank MCB, or MCB, for allowing us affordable space at the Harbor Place to make us extremely successful and hopefully for the next CIA coming up. Thank you, sir, and the team. Affordable, I should say, because as a small company or small business, we could not dream of landing such a beautiful place at the inner harbor. So thank you. I want to take time out to say, guys, if you can approve this proposal ASAP, so we can enlighten our vision, our dream of moving forward year after year at the inner harbor. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. That's a nice jacket. It's a ni, it's a nice shirt, but it's not as nice as that jacket. Sir.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for being here. I, I'm Andrew Hinton. Andrew Hinton, president of the City Center Residents Association. We're the Neighborhood Association for Downtown Baltimore. Our area is Pratt Street, north to Center, which is Mount Vernon, east to 83, west to Utah. So I'm here in my individual capacity, not representing the board or all the residents of downtown, however, would like to share some context for who the CCRA is. I think of our constituency in three ways. We've got condo owners or homeowners. This is a relatively smaller quantity, but a very passionate group of people who care a lot about making the neighborhood better. We've got renters. Downtown, Downtown Baltimore is the fastest-growing residential neighborhood, two decades in a row now, and most of that comes from renters. And so, and then third, I like to think of is residential life professionals, property managers, condo association managers. A lot of our support comes from both homeowner, condo owners, and property management professionals who represent interests of residents. Me personally, I don't see a lot of issue in the height restriction. I think people that live in downtown actually appreciate living in a really large city or a city that seems to be really large with, with, with the taller buildings. As long as there's parking, I don't think the density issue is a problem. We, we encourage two plethora of, of parking spaces if possible. And then, you know, lastly, just, you know, there was some comment about moving the decision forwards. I think it's never going to be, you know, all the information. I think there's always pros and cons, but the pros in this scenario, in my view, outweigh the cons, and we should, we should go forwards with the approval.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Hey, thanks, everyone, for being here. Michael Starnes, I'm a local housing activist. I want to speak really briefly why I'm in favor...
I'm sorry, did you, tell us your name.
Michael Starnes. I want to speak really briefly why I support the adoption of the three proposed measures. Even though there is a pretty high vacancy rate for downtown Baltimore in terms of residential units, supporting the proposed measures could help address the vacancy rate. For instance, the World Trade property has about a 45% occupancy rate, and having this housing right there would be really key in addressing the viability of that property and making sure there's, making sure there's round-the-clock people that are, you know, on the street, enjoying it, going to these properties and spending money there, so the live-work-play model really makes sense. Secondly, the recently passed measure on the inclusionary zoning side will mean that there are affordable housing properties on site. So that will be something that will be possible with the three proposed measures. There'll be net an increase in affordable housing, and it will also have the money to kind of subsidize those units. This is a nice area, and you need the money to cross-subsidize the below-market units. And then the third reason that I support the three proposed measures that we're looking at today is that it will roughly have the same footprint, and it's going to keep a very large amount of green space. So renovating the, you know, the half-occupied hooters is not a, you know, that's not a net loss, that's not protected parkland, like, we're not making a radical shift in uses, and this is right downtown. So the proposed measures fit the, the vibe, so to speak, with the surrounding buildings and the surrounding heights, given that it's less than the surrounding properties that are within eye, the eye shed. And that concludes my remarks, but I support all three measures.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Hi, good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon, evening. My name is Amanda Mack. I am the owner of Crust by Mack Bakery, born, raised, and baked in Baltimore. I'm just really excited to be here, honestly, and to stand in support of the new Harbor Place. I come from a long line of women in the kitchen. My grandmother actually worked for some of Baltimore's earliest restaurants. She taught me pretty much everything that I know. And I actually met Mr. Bramble at my previous location in Hamden. He was a customer, and he came and he always talked about my mission, what I was doing... He was a customer, and he came and he always talked about my mission, what I was doing. We actually, my bakery, my grandmother works for me in my bakery, my mom, my aunts, a long line of family. And that was something that he really saw and connected with. He told me about the Harbor Place project and asked me if I was interested. I said, yes. Everything that we talked about, he literally came through on all of his promises, so much in fact, that when I actually went down to look at the property, I met with Adam, and we walked through the building. There was no, I I can't stress this enough. When you're leasing a property, when you're looking for a place to grow your business, a lot of things you're, it's a lot of things you're surrounded by. You're thinking about pricing, you're thinking about, you know, how am I going to afford the cam? How am I going to afford my equipment? All of those things, as soon as I walked into Harbor Place, were eliminated. It was like, let me show you all the places that we have available. What do you like? What are you looking for? What are your goals? Everything was so different than like a traditional space, so much so that I walked in, I fell in love with the place, and I was just like thinking like, oh, my gosh, how am I going to do this? How am I going to afford a space like this, an opportunity like this? And money was not just the last thing we talked about because it was something that was a promise that that David made to me. And I'm sorry, I'm trying not to get emotional.
We got a pause for that. No.
I grew up at McCullough Homes Projects. My family grew up at McCullough Homes Projects, were from Upton, Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm a first generation, graduated from college. To have something like this, to be on the water, to be connected to my ancestors in such a way, to have my mother, my grandmother, my children, my husband stand beside me and say, our name is on this building. The developer wants me to succeed. He's pouring into me, he's ensuring my success. I never, the places that I opened up before, my rent is less. You know what I'm saying? So it's just going into business with someone who gets you, who wants you to succeed, who is willing to do everything that they can do. It's amazing. It's an honor for me to be here. I hope that you guys support this. I hope you see the the benefit and the potential. We're not even open, and people come to our pop ups saying, I haven't been downtown in 15 years. I haven't been here in years, and they're already planning to come back when we open. So I just want you to know that this man, this company is doing something great. They're really, you know, coming through on their promises and showing their tenants that this is bigger than Baltimore. This is generational wealth. This is opportunity. So I just hope that you all support this, you pass this, because we're growing and there is a renaissance happening, and it starts with us. It starts with people seeing what we're doing, believing in what we're doing, and really supporting that. So thank you to David Bramble, thank you to M C B, thank you to Adam, and thank you to you all for listening and to, you know, trying to see this through. Things are really happening, and I'm I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there? Yes, Councilman.
Just two things. If you haven't been to Crust by Mac, you should. But you should also be careful because it's good. And I don't I don't have favorites, but your your mom Tiffany welcomed me to the Druid Heights community when I first got on the council nine years ago. She is she is one of my favorite human beings. Please tell her I said hello.
She she knows I'm here. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Yes.
That's a hard act to follow.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Hi, good afternoon.
And I figured if I if I let the buzzer go off while she was in there, you guys.
Yeah, no, you didn't.
I was dead, so.
I know, I know. Now I'm going to try to go fast. I've been semi obsessed with.
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Emma Stokes. I've lived in Baltimore about 40 years now, and I've been semi obsessed with Harbor Place for about that time because I had someone trying to recruit me to Baltimore, and I really didn't want to come here. But he told me that Baltimore really was having a rebirth. This is like 40 years ago, and, you know, one of the big pieces was this thing called Harbor Place. I was living up in Boston at the time, although I'm originally from Virginia. And he also told me about how there'd been some torrential opposition to it and a lot of rage about turning the public, the private, the public lands and for some private development. But anyway, I said yes. I actually moved, rented in Federal Hill. I've rented around the harbor. I bought, I sold my place. I'm still around the harbor, and I I really am very keen on Harbor Place getting revived. So I'm very supportive of what's proposed here, although it's taken me a while to get there. So I'll talk just a teensy bit about just Harbor Place. It's like the ghost of Christmas past, Harbor Place past. Imagine my sadness and loss, since I used to go over there almost every day, you know, my first 20 years here, watching its deterioration over the past 10 or more years in particular. I constantly looked for signs of something or someone that might turn the tide and rescue Harbor Place. Yet every time I walked over there, there were signs of further deterioration, and it just got shabbier and shabbier, and some of the occupants got tackier and tackier. I really didn't want to take my guests there much anymore, but I didn't have other places nearby to take them. And the liveliness that characterized it was gone. But there didn't seem to be any sign in this city of any strategy emerging from government or business, from the public or private sector. I sort of couldn't believe that, but I I looked hard and kept studying it, as I have particularly in the past year and a half. The bankruptcy in 2019 of this legendary urban Renaissance place, which was then probably more than half vacant, overloaded with debt, default, major image problems, really made the possibility of a turnaround more elusive than ever. The collapse of this waterfront center has been highly visible, painfully slow, and humbling all at once, occurring as Baltimore's civic pride is battered by corruption, murder rates, our latest problems with juveniles, and a tarnished national image. I started feeling a little embarrassed for us all. It was just sad. But then, in early 1922, I learned at last there was somebody seriously interested. I think the mayor made some announcement that something was in the works. And then later, I actually learned, you know, what was going on. There was somebody really interested in revitalizing Harbor Place, and I was thrilled in my belief also that downtown Baltimore could start a pathway toward thriving because it was failing also. And I'm ever the optimist, so I I really took this positively. I thought we'd have the harbor back as a place of excitement, hope, and possibility to transform us back where we were, but even beyond. I had an opportunity at some point to meet David Bramble, talk briefly about his ideas and hope. And for the past year and a half, I've seized every opportunity to understand Harbor Place, both its torturous history, but even more avidly sought out this, hear about the possibility of positive change. M C B made it easy for me because they had all those sessions, and I went to all of them, this engagement process. And I've never known of a developer who did anything like they did. I mean, maybe maybe others do, but I'd never, in my whole life, I've never heard of a developer doing this kind of engagement. And the more I learned and even field tested some of their assertions, because at first I was sort of doubtful, but I, you know, they talk about greater visibility of the water being created by the corridors. I actually walked around and and looked and said, yep, they're, they have abided by that. So I've come to sort of admire the majority of the plan for the use of this land. I keep asking hard questions, and I'm not quickly satisfied by the answers, but I get answers. I mean, they're very available. And I've been excited and even more optimistic about downtown Baltimore with the advent of this commitment. I'm now following this development really closely, and while I initially had not had an entirely positive reaction to the first time I saw the design, I've continued to explore and quite frankly, challenge my assumptions, especially those that are untested, ask hard questions, and really see whether we really have a strategic vision now for Harbor Place from a developer who's personally committed to charm cities' future. And an added bonus is that he's not asking for a T I F. I mean, that's sort of unheard of. Having key principles, as they have with their pillars, any developer who plans land use needs to have that, and they they have, I think, pretty elegantly laid those pillars out. And I think they're also being attentive to whatever these larger plans, the, you know, the, people could say, we need a master plan. Well, we have, we're getting one again, and I think they're being attentive to that. I mean, as the woman who spoke after David said, this whole thing about the the streets and so forth predates them, but they're incorporating that. And then I think, again, the connectivity of the the water view and the fact that, as I've looked even more closely, the first floor, if not the first two floors of every single building, you can see through. You know, you can't see through hooters now, you know, but you can see through and see the water. So to me, it's just, it's really a quite, I'm not crazy about high buildings, but frankly, if I could, I'm only 5'1", if I can see through the first two floors, that's that's fine. That's fine for me. Then there's the most expressed concern about the residential apartments. But I've had to learn much more than I ever knew about economic sustainability, and I don't pretend to understand it, but other people have talked about what this project could mean to the, you know, city revenue, et cetera. And finally, I'm just willing to suspend being judgmental and hypercritical, which is my bet. I was an organizational effectiveness person, and so, you know, I really could be tough. But I'm going to trust that David Bramble and his team will abide by the solid principles they've well stated many times in these presentations over the past eight months and their well-developed website. This concept that a new reimagined Harbor Place, as envisioned, will provide significant tax revenues is exciting and that it will actually enhance values of property surrounding it, just like Harbor Place did almost 50 years ago. And as you heard from the the coffee people and the bakery, they're doing things in the interim, so they're keeping Harbor Place alive even as we speak. So here we are again, this almost 50 years later, and including the last 10 hard years watching it decay, trying to figure out how the land beneath the marketplace might be reborn, reimagined, flourished, and adore. And I sincerely hope and feel that now is the time to to find the political will, the financial means, planning capacity, and hopefully civic commitment to engage Baltimore in a meaningful and lasting transformation. And I think probably because I just had my near 80th birthday, I'm in a rush, and I really want to be, you know, I'm doing my best to stay healthy, but I really want to have a revitalized Harbor Place to enjoy again, you know, and bring friends and family to. And so personally, I'm desperately in need of this, and I think Baltimore is too.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay. Yes, Councilman.
Emma, I've I've known you for a long time, before I even joined the council. I've fielded hundreds and hundreds of phone calls and emails and text messages about this. No one have I spent more time talking with and communicating with than you, so I appreciate all the due diligence that you've exhibited throughout this entire process and and your willingness to to keep digging in, to learn more, to be flexible, and really to ask really difficult questions.
Yeah, I'm a real pain in the ass to the M C B people.
Not not my words. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm glad we got that on. Thank you very much. Next. Okay, what what the hell's that?
Good evening. My name is Jim Pross. I'm a resident of Baltimore. I went to graduate school at Cornell in economics and land use planning, and I got hired in 1972, and I came to Baltimore, and I was working with an economics firm and a design firm, W R T, Wallace, Robertson, Todd. And I know Dave Wallace was saying, well, we're going to figure this, I think it was Harbor Yeast or whatever, it had different, didn't even have a name at the time, and he had these pods on there. And the pods led to what what Jim Rouse did, and it was just a home run. Later in my career, I I got involved with a Cleveland waterfront and Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and Science Museum and small, small harbor. That meant that the Corps of Engineers paid for the waterfront. And I really liked the concept or the idea of this is our front door. When people came to Baltimore, we could bring them to Harbor Place. Now I got to go back to Fort McHenry or the Train Museum, and I'd like to be able to bring them back to to Harbor Place. And I really agree entirely with with Leon Bridges that we should table this and do our homework and do it right. And if we need an attractor, that's fine. There are lots of details that need to be done. There's no need to rush this into an election year cycle. The city has granted a baitments or discounted land leases to the developer so he can do the good things he's been doing, and I hope he continues to do that. But we have to really look at the project in in its entirety and as the front door of Baltimore, not have a pro, I do pro formas, this is a pro forma driven project, great project from a pro forma, assuming that the residential demand will will hang in there. But you've got to address design issues. You've got to address financial feasibility issues. You've got to address market issues. If we get all this wonderful federal and state money, half of them are going to ask for matching grants, and where the heck are the matching grants come from? The way the parking, and there is going to have to be parking for residential towers, and it's going to be underground, and that's going to cost wuku money, and you also want affordable housing. So affordable housing, underground parking, it's going to be difficult. And there's financial things. I know that they have taken over from an unnamed developer the project, but there's a big change they're doing, and I hope the city will evaluate the change. They're not doing any more ground development, but they're building 900 units, 350 feet in the air, and that should have some type of evaluation as well. So and there's a, they need a pedestrian plan, they need a traffic plan, they need a market study, they need a financial plan, they need an M B E plan, they need a workforce development plan. And, you know, rushing this thing, it doesn't make any sense. So I strongly urge that this be tabled and get back to the table and do their homework, do it in detail, do it as fast as possible, and make sure we have a project we all can be proud of and will be the home run that Harbor Place was for 25 years, and then it got into other hands and other things happened.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Yes, Councilman.
Jim, I want to thank you for for joining us today.
Haven't been in a meeting with you since last night.
I know.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
Jim's one of our community leaders in Bolton Hill and does excellent work. I did want to point out one, two things. One point of clarification and one overarching comment. The point of clarification on the state and federal funding, that's not going to require matching grants. Senate President Ferguson was able to secure $67.5 million toward the the total roundabout figures that we've discussed, and and there isn't an expectation of that. But but it's a good point, and and I think it's important to bring up when we talk about, you know, the dollars related to public infrastructure that are for public benefit that are that are not funded by the city. And kind of the overarching comment I I would make is that I agree with with a lot of what you said about the different studies and analyses that need to occur, and and I would encourage you to to check out the ourharborplace.com website because a a good portion of that work has been completed. And I think there's there's been a very clear acknowledgement from the from the project team in several of the the small setting meetings to the large 220-plus person public forum that I hosted of of the need to to do those things and and the the commitment to to follow through on them. So I appreciate the the point. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Good evening to the Commission. My name is Rose Backus Davis-Ham. I am a residence, resident of Madison Park, and I've been a Baltimore citizen and resident for 78 years.
No.
Yes. And let me just say that I welcomed, and we all welcomed David and M B C when they came to the Waxer Senior Center, where I'm also the treasurer of the auxiliary ward there, to explain and to have a really good earthy conversation with us where we. there, to explain and to have a really good, earthy conversation with us, where we were able to break up into groups and really do some real dialogue about what we wanted to see as seniors at the Inner Harbor, and that has all been put in place. I see a safety issue there that has been resolved as far as movement of people around the complex, being able to go to other complexes outside of the Inner Harbor. Let me say this, when you put a car in a field and leave it there, it rusts away, and that's what has happened to downtown Inner Harbor. And we need to revitalize that area so that everyone will once again want to feel a part of it and come back to the Inner Harbor. The residencies will be exceptional because businesses will want to be there. There will be good places for their employees to be able to live besides some other locations that they're living in now in the city of Baltimore. So I look forward to the revitalization of Harbor Place. We need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Yes, councilman?
No, not a question. Ms. Rose, I emailed your son Akil about two hours ago. Tell him I'm trying to track him down. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm glad we were able to get rid of, you know, get that piece of business taken care of as part of this public hearing. All right. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tepora Bilazekian. I'm very happy to be here, and I want to start by thanking everyone who's putting their heart and soul into trying to improve our city, including MCB Real Estate, David Bramble, and everyone who really wants to see our city thrive again. And I think what's missing at this juncture is that we're not working together. We're not working together as citizens, as legislators, and as real estate developers. And I think that's what our city, that's our strength as a community, is when we work together, and I feel right now, I'm just a regular Baltimorean. I don't have any accolades. I do have one special connection with Harbor Place, which is that I had a store there for 10 years when it was owned by Rouse. My ex-husband had one there for 20 years. In fact, I think he probably worked with Liz Bement when she was one of the Rouse employees. And it was an incredible place to run a business, and I know it can be again. And my personal opinion is that David Bramble is the developer that would make sure that the small businesses had a voice there. I think where a lot of the issues are coming up with is the fear of what's on the other side of raising the height limit. And we, you know, we don't have any guarantees or promises right now about who's going to own it, who's going to develop it, who will own it in five years. Developers are famous, and I'm not saying that MCB is at all involved in this, but real estate is famous for building something that they then sell. So when we were talking earlier and we got the amazingly fast summary of the information, you know, I'm just now learning that the aquarium could be taken down and built up because of that height restriction being limited. The aquarium is an iconic--
Wait, real quick. I got to pause this real quickly. So you understand, the way that was stated is, the aquarium, Pier 3 and Pier 4, are outside of the urban renewal plan. They still have, you know, there's still zoning that has to apply to them, there's still, best of my knowledge, there's still publicly owned land. There's a variety of other things, so please don't--
So we don't have to worry about Pier 3 and Pier 4?
Okay, good.
Okay, awesome. It was so fast that I was actually having trouble understanding it. I wish we could have slowed it down a little.
Because what I'm worried about is some headline tomorrow, "The aquarium's coming down."
Thank you, but that was really terrifying. But the concern is, what happens when it's not a David Bramble running it? What happens when someone who doesn't care about small merchants comes into the picture? Because we saw what happened when it got transitioned from Rouse to Ashkenazi. So lifting the height restriction and getting those buildings in there isn't so much about what's happening now or what's being proposed, but what could happen. And I agree with people that have stated that this is rushed, and I want to make a mention that as just a regular citizen, we don't understand the legislation. Some of us are just now starting to understand it today and yesterday. Most people thought all of the bills were going to referendum. We feel like we're not empowered, so it was really great to hear that there's some more citizen commentary being built in to the process. We really appreciate that. But just based on, you know, how people are in Baltimore and just around the world, there isn't a lot of political engagement. So how can we make our voice heard if we don't even understand the legislation? I don't have a representative who sat down with me and brought in their legal team and had like a meeting at the library and a forum at the library to say, here's how legislation works on this project, here's how to understand it. So we're not educated as a public on this process, which is why I feel like it's going too fast. The last thing I'm going to say, and I can say it in like 30 seconds, I live three blocks from Inner Harbor East. We, you know, you know all the high raises in Inner Harbor East. I don't, I'm not buying the narrative, and I know people disagree with me, that's awesome, we're in a democracy, right? I'm not buying the narrative that 900 people in a high-rise development are going to support retail. That hasn't been my experience walking through Inner Harbor East. There are two blocks that now are completely empty on the first floor that used to have the mom-and-pop retail. The ones that are surviving are the chains, and the mom-and-pop retails are not getting the activation from people in there. Now, I know David Bramble is a much better developer, and he would bring the activity, but I think it's the bringing of the activity. What Rouse used to do is bring activity, and we had more visitors in Baltimore City around the harbor than Disney World. That's astonishing when we think about it, and it's because of the work that the Rouse Company marketing program did to have constant stream of entertainment. I'll end now and take any questions so some other people can come up.
Thank you very much. Wow, Councilman Costello.
Chakra.
Hey, I wouldn't have thought. Mr. Councilman.
Thank you. Wait until she's ready.
All right, hold on a second.
Oh, oh. So I appreciate you taking the time to join us today, to share your thoughts on it. I know that you've been very engaged in the community during this discussion over the past few months. We've had a few opportunities to interact and discuss. There's a couple points of clarification that I think are really important to note. First, the level of community outreach that has occurred here, and I know you referred to yourself as a regular citizen or kind of Jack or Jill or whatever, but your voice is no less than anyone else's in this room, whether they have the title of councilman or commissioner or business owner or developer or attorney or youth advocate or whatever. Everyone's voice in this matter is critically important. And I'll say, having worked on a number of development projects in my nine years on the council, billions and billions of dollars of economic development projects, including Port Covington, this project has by far and away exceeded the level of community outreach and engagement that I have ever seen. And I would challenge any person in this room or the city of Baltimore to identify a project that has gone through this level of community engagement. And it's important to note that that level of community engagement usually occurs after plans are presented, not before plans are presented, because what typically happens is a parcel of property is identified, and a developer says, I want to do X, Y, and Z on this project, I want to build this thing and this other thing. And then the developer talks to elected officials and then goes to community meetings and has debates and discussions and talks about things like parking and the angle of the sun and whether or not it's going to block their view and things of that nature. This project, there was a citywide online forum on May 17th. There was an in-person citywide meeting on June 3 at the Reginald L. Lewis Museum. There was another citywide, which was aimed at targeting our senior population, on August 2 at the Waxer Center. There was another one on September 30 at Harbor Place. There was another one on November 3 at Coppin State University. There was another one, which I know you attended because we discussed it and I hosted it at the National Federation of the Blind on November 6. The mayor hosted one on December 12 at the Middle Branch Fitness Center in Cherry Hill. I will be hosting another one in January. Details to be determined. I know other of my colleagues on the council will be hosting them. I know that the mayor will be hosting another one to make sure that we're bringing these critically important community discussions to every corner of our city. So I think that's the first thing that's really important to note. The second thing is that when people have reached out, and I see several constituents in the room who have reached out to me, Bob Merbler and Cindy Conklin, we came to your home for an hour, and while we may not agree necessarily, right, and we've known each other for over a decade since we served on the neighborhood board together, Bob, this group has been accessible. We may disagree on their plans. Emma, when we first started talking about this, you were opposed to this. This group has made itself accessible. Jim, I've offered it up. There were several other constituents who were in the room prior, and there are hundreds of other constituents who have asked questions, and every single one of them has gotten an email from me saying, would you like me to connect you with someone from the project team? And the reason I'm making that offer is because I'm writing a check that I can cash, because this project team will go and meet with them. They will sit down with you, they will talk to you, they will hear your concerns, they will listen to what you have to say. They may disagree with you, but I can assure you that they will take the time to sit down with you and listen to you. And I think it's important to note that in the last two public forums, and we talked about this in the forum that I hosted on November 6 at the Federation of the Blind, we talked about it here on November 30 at the first iteration of the Planning Commission, we talked about it again today on December 21, and it will be discussed at subsequent community forums, is that we've been very clear about, I think that-- That's, see, I serve on 13 boards, and this is my favorite chairman, and I'm sorry if the other 12 are listening, but my chairman always keeps me in check. But I think it's important to note that we've been clear about what it is that the legislation does. And the reality is, is that it is a complex structure because there are three sets of rules that govern what happens in the inner harbor. It's not like your home in a neighborhood where it's not an urban renewal plan and there's only one set of rules. There are three sets of rules, but we have been, despite several repeated assertions made online, that there's a lack of transparency around this process and around what it is that the legislation is doing, I feel compelled to say on the record that that is patently false. When those questions have come up, those questions have not been evaded, those questions have been answered directly. I had a wonderful conversation this morning with a constituent on the 700 block of Williams Street in Federal Hill, and I walked through the fact that there could not be development south of East Conway Street. And I want to thank, I'm not going to say her name, I want to thank that constituent for that conversation because that triggered me to call the city solicitor this morning and say, I need you to send someone over from the law department to take a look at this and to reassure people from an independent perspective. Ms. Hecker is fantastic, I've worked with her on a million projects, but she also has a job and she's got a client to represent. I wanted someone independent to verify what she was saying and what I was saying, and I think that's critically important. And I think that story is reflective of the commitment to be transparent and to take feedback to heart and to do something about that. That conversation with that constituent this morning is the impetus behind the public commitment that I've made this evening, that we shall amend, not we're going to look at it or we're going to consider it. We shall amend. I put my name behind that, my word is on that, that we are going to amend that summary to reduce confusion so that people are clear, and we need to alleviate concerns. And that brings me to my last point to come full circle here, is that there is fear of the unknown. But it's important to note that a great deal of that fear has been driven by the spread of misinformation. And it's important and it's incumbent upon all of us, especially those that are engaged in this process, to do their due diligence and to make sure they understand the information and to share the correct information and to correct that misinformation when we see that. And I'm publicly committing, as I've done from day one in this process, that I will continue to do that. And if someone brings something to our attention, we will address that and make sure that we are clear moving forward. And lastly, I know I said lastly, but I'm going to say it once more, there was a comment made at the beginning about, you know, we're not working together collectively. And I want to point out that working together does not mean agreeing. Working together, leadership is about listening. It's about an ability to be quiet and not think about what's coming out of your mouth next and to hear what the other person is saying and to take it to heart and to process it and to respond to it. And hopefully, for each and every one of us, no matter how strong our opinions are of support or opposition or Emma Stokes and just wanting to learn more, right, is that we take something from that conversation and it helps inform the way that we think about it. It may not change our position. So there was a comment made at the beginning about our legislators not working together. And I'm the lead sponsor of this resolution, and the council president, Nick Mosby, joined me on that. So I don't know if that comment is directed at me, but what I would like to say is, one, I hope that that is not reflective of the way that anyone has interpreted my actions or communications during this project. And number two, I want to make another public commitment, that if someone has a suggestion, not a disagreement, but a suggestion for how we could be more transparent in this process, how we could make sure that more voices are heard, please let me know. My door is open. You can call me, you can text me, you can Facebook DM me, you can Twitter DM me, so on and so forth, all the way to a carrier pigeon. I will listen. I may not agree, but I promise you I will listen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I respond and keep it brief?
Real brief.
Okay. So when I talk about going to the library with my elected official, who I've never had the pleasure of speaking with despite numerous phone calls and emails wanting to understand this, I know. I'm talking about someone from the legal department of one of the Baltimore City agencies or an elected official sitting down with us without the developer present to explain the legislation. That's point number one. Point number two is, while I completely understand that the community engagement is from the heart, I also know it's because there's going to be a ballot referendum. So let's be clear about this. This can't go through without us, that's why we're so engaged, that's one reason why. Third point, the legislation wasn't introduced to the public until October 31. You said May 31 was your first meeting for public engagement. I've spoken directly to people, and in fact, Sue Carlin has a video on the Baltimore City Voters page, where they were not introduced to the legislation, they were introduced to the design and the, you know, what do you want the waterfront to look like? So that's not the same as talking about legislation. So that was what my comment was about. I also did not mean to say that our legislators are not working together. I mean that our elected officials have not sat down with us, independent of the developer, to have these discussions, other than you, Eric, but you have skin in the game, right? This is your baby. So you're in a special compartment. But what about all the other people in the city council? What about our delegates? They've never come forward. So because this is rushed, and we can disagree about that, but the legislation was introduced, what, October 31? Here we are like three days before the holiday, some people have already been engaged in the holiday for Hanukkah. This is so rushed that we haven't had time to really learn about it. We need that time, and so that's where I want to end.
Mr. Chairman, if I, and I'm super brief.
Really?
Number one, I've asked the development team to put together a two-pager-- Number one, I've asked the development team to put together a two pager that is simple to consume and digest, that is available on their website. I've put links to that on my social media. Two, I will say that while this project may be bigger in scale than some of the work that MCB has done, MCB specifically on, I don't know what it's called now, the Madison Park North Project, and Jim will attest to this, has been coming to Bolton Hill for years, over the past decade, leading up to that project, which is an unprecedented level of community outreach. And three, finally, I would say, you know, our state senators and our state delegates, there may be a time for them to address this. Right now, this is in the city arena. If you want to get connected with your councilman in the first district, shoot me an email and I'll get you connected.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to add something really, really quick. It's important to recognize there is a timing mechanism to this because the legislation has to be introduced, has to go through our city council process in order to get on the public referendum for a 2024 vote. If it doesn't make the 2024 vote, it's out two years. Okay? So we're not going to hold a special referendum on just this. So there is a measure of urgency on that. Thank you. Yes?
Hi. What I have to say, I take less than half a minute. And Eric, thank you for talking about that we should all be listening to each other. I think we all want the same end goal. How we get there, it looks very different to many people in this room.
Ms. Chair.
Your name? Donabeth Joy Shapiro. Okay. So passing an ordinance that allows for housing goes against the city charter, which right now only allows for eating places and other commercial uses. So it goes against the city law unless the charter is first amended and until the voters have their say on a charter amendment, which is what we're all talking about, a city ordinance is not valid. So I think a lot of us have a problem with this process, that we're putting the cart before the horse because a developer has... And I have no issue with Mr. Bramble, right? This is just a process, right? And so we're allowing for something that might happen with a responsible developer, but let's say Mr. Bramble drops out and then we've already changed all the rules of the game and we haven't even gotten to the charter amendment yet. I mean, this needs to be locked down, is what I'm saying. We need to be way more careful with how we're doing this. Even if Mr. Rouse was reincarnated and came back and he wanted to do this, we would have to use the same process. We would have to be very, very careful with how we are staging this. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Ms. Chair, very briefly, Ms. Joy Shapiro, appreciate you coming down. I know you live in close proximity, not in my district, but want to note that commercial, right, which is currently permitted in the city charter, does include multifamily. Among other things, the charter amendment seeks to clarify that, to reiterate what is already in state law, but commercial does include the use of multifamily.
But did it include, sorry, did it include it at the time that Harbor Place was built? I mean, because we voted on something which still has to be valid until we change it.
The definition of commercial, as I understand it, has always included multifamily, but I can't confirm that because I don't know. But the language in the charter, which says "commercial use," multifamily qualifies as commercial use.
Okay. But the larger question, you know, the larger issue, of course, is that anything that the city council may vote on is not even valid unless the charter amendment is voted in.
Understood.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Next.
Hi, yes. I'll back up. So my name is Isaac Leal. I live in Midtown, just around the Belvedere. I'm not going to speak on what people think about the design. My thoughts on design review are well published. What I will say is I work, trained as an economist, an environmental scientist. I work for the IRS as a social scientist and researcher. The American Community Survey data, which is published by the Census, and as well as internal knowledge published by the city, by the planning department, all suggest that this project makes economic sense, makes some financial sense for the development. And I think that updating the zoning and updating the laws, the ordinances, adding the charter amendment is consistent with reasonable practices to meet economic demand and to meet housing demand for super premium products like this, for Class A apartment space, for office space as well. And I do think that more symbolically rather than materially, this is a project that sort of is the symbol of a new Baltimore, of a, you know, of the future as we see the city. And so to me, I fully support this and I support the recommendation to pass the, I guess, a positive recommendation of the proposed ordinances as amended.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any questions?
Isaac Leal.
Are there any questions from Mr. Leal? Real quickly. All right. Thank you very much. Next.
My name is Brent Padorka, and I just want to thank everyone for going through this process. And I want to thank the developer as well for listening to the public and having the forums that he's had. I am a resident of Baltimore City and a lifelong resident of Baltimore. I knew, I grew up spending time at the Inner Harbor with my family and later with my friends. Throughout COVID, I enjoyed many weekends outdoors, walking along the promenade at Harbor Place. I strongly oppose all three city council bills. For 45 years, the purpose of the Inner Harbor has been to provide a waterfront park that is owned by the public for all citizens to enjoy in perpetuity. Despite what we've heard today from the developer, the Inner Harbor is not private property. I want to clarify that. I know we've talked about it, but he owns the rights to the buildings, but the land around his buildings is public parkland, owned by you, the citizens of Baltimore. This planned park that sits along the waterfront is sacred space for Baltimore. It should never be divided up, sold off, or repurposed. For once it is gone, it is gone forever. When the developer, Mr. David Bramble, acquired development rights to Harbor Place from receivership, he was fully aware of the boundary and zoning limitations on his property. Yet Mr. Bramble stated himself in public forums that if he does not get these bills passed, he will not proceed with the redevelopment of Harbor Place. It is unreasonable for this planning commission and the citizens of Baltimore to appease the developer and those who are sponsoring these bills so that the citizens of Baltimore can see the long overdue renewal of Harbor Place. A developer should not acquire property in expectation that the zoning laws will be overturned to their benefit. I'm concerned that this practice would set up a poor precedent for developers all over Baltimore. In addition, lifting so many zoning restrictions and giving away the key to Baltimore's crown jewel will remove many of the safeguards the city can impose. If the developer decides to scrap his plan and line the waterfront with multiple 50-story apartments, the city will be left with few mechanisms to stop him. Despite that the Inner Harbor is primarily a public park, Mr. Bramble is proposing to build two residential towers and a commercial office building at the Inner Harbor. No developer should be allowed to build residential towers or office buildings within the borders of our publicly owned park. Imagine for a moment, if you will, New York City allowing a developer to build apartment office buildings within Central Park. Developers can add ground level retail units and rebrand this as mixed use all they want, but this is still privatization. And since privatization within our Inner Harbor parks, and such privatization within our Inner Harbor parks sets a dangerous precedent for all parks throughout our city. The Inner Harbor was designed to be pedestrian friendly and public accessible. As such, the zoning code specifically states that development within the Inner Harbor be predominantly pedestrian oriented. This residential and off, which residential, yeah, sorry, which residential and office buildings are not. These buildings are not open to the public and offer nothing to pedestrians. And mixed use retail units on the ground level certainly do not qualify these structures as predominantly pedestrian oriented. Furthermore, the towering 32-story and 25-story apartment buildings that Mr. Bramble is proposing will far exceed the existing 100-feet height limit that has long defined Harbor Place. The language in the current zoning code specifies that inner harbor development be relatively low scaled to accommodate the view of the harbor from adjoining sub-districts. The commission should reject the developer's request to remove this language from the zoning code. This is what distinguishes the Inner Harbor from the rest of the waterfront, such as Harbor East and Harbor Point. Mr. Bramble's proposed development is not load scaled. The increased density of buildings would effectively wall off the waterfront view, except for an archway under one building and a few narrow corridors between structures. And the proposed height for the buildings will also restrict the view of the harbor from neighboring buildings and adjacent streets. I ask that the language in this code stand as it is and that the maximum building height in the Inner Harbor be greatly limited in order to preserve the view of the waterfront. I find it disturbing also, I just learned in today's hearing, that the developer wants to change the zoning of McKeldon Plaza to commercial and remove the height restrictions. I don't think that this corner of the Inner Harbor should ever be commercially developed. And finally, the developer proposes that the city greatly reduce the number of traffic lanes on Light Street and Pratt Street. Mr. Bramble claims that traffic calming and pedestrian safety is the purpose behind this request, but these lane restrictions would provide, these lane reductions would provide another advantage to the developer. It would allow him to extend one of his apartment buildings into what are currently the northbound lanes of Light Street. The decision to reduce lanes and change these traffic patterns should not be made without a proper traffic study. Light Street and Pratt Street are major arteries downtown. These roads allow for traffic coming to and from ballgames, the convention center, hotels, the CFG Arena, the National Aquarium, other major attractions in the downtown area. Reducing these lanes would cause major gridlock daily and potentially overload the adjacent streets that are not designed for traffic, heavy traffic, that is. To this extent, the developer's proposal to extend his development boundary should be modified or paused until all traffic studies are complete. In addition, I ask that the planning commission recommend that studies looking at pedestrian bridges over these roadways also be considered in addressing pedestrian safety concerns. I urge the members of the planning commission to reject all three proposed bills. These changes threaten to reverse the initial master plan and impact the future of our Inner Harbor and city forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Chalker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to thank you for joining us today. I know you were here for the previous item in Charles Village, so thank you for sticking around. Could not agree with you more on the comment about the need for a traffic study before changes are implemented on Pratt Street and Light Street and Conway. I agree with you. I believe the development team agrees with you. I can assure you that the mayor and the administration and our Department of Transportation agree with you. I think where that's coming from is a desire to make those streets safer for pedestrians. I know you referenced the pedestrian bridges. That's something that we've been moving away from, as you can recall, demolition of one of those, if not two of those bridges, yep, in the last decade. I will tell you that when 414 Light Street, I assume you're familiar with that, when that building was constructed, there was a great deal of outrage from many of our neighbors in Federal Hill and Sharp Witten Hall and Otterbine about the narrowing of Light Street and the reduction of a lane. And there were curb bump outs that were built for pedestrian safety. And I can tell you, over the past four or five years, since those have been in place, the only request that we've gotten related to those is to please do more. It's like crossing an interstate highway. You're really taking your life in your own hands. I think it's important to note, when we talk about McKeldon Plaza, that commercial use is already permitted there. So we're not proposing to change that. And I, you know, you brought up, I think the intention of the point was good around having something private in the middle of a public space. But unfortunately, the train left the station on that 50 years ago when the voters of this city approved those parcels for private use. And I think that's really important to note in the larger context, is that that's the existing set of conditions.
I have no problem with private use and commercial use within the park, within the Inner Harbor Park. My issue is how it's done. Office space and apartment buildings, that is what my problem is. I don't feel like they should be in our waterfront park.
I totally appreciate that. And, you know, what I would close with is just, you know, when we think about the World Trade Center, which I think is 31 stories, does that sound right? Plus or minus? Directly adjacent to, that's office space. But do appreciate you coming down and it's helpful feedback. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Next.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm pleased to be able to appear before you today. And I've got to say, as somebody who's now retired but sat in meetings, I have never seen a group of people sit in a meeting for as long as this one's been going on. So I admire your fortitude.
Yeah, I can't feel my butt right now, but that's okay.
My name is Douglas Hamilton. I've lived in the city almost 35 years, mostly in Otterbine, but now in Riverside. In lieu of making a statement, I'm just going to ask some questions to help clarify. This has been an extremely useful session for me because some things that I didn't know about, I know about now, but I still have some additional questions that I'd like to address. Most of my questions actually revolve around one of the bills, the zoning bill 0446. And particular, the first question I have is why is there no height limit in that bill? Why are we lifting, eliminating the height limit altogether? So we have basically, the sky will be the limit in that bill. It's a zoning bill, and it will apply to a fairly large swath of land around the Inner Harbor. So why not impose some restriction?
The zoning immediately across Light Street and Pratt Street has the exact same zoning, but no height limit. This would mirror what's happening across Pratt Street and Light Street.
The second point is I was assured, or reassured, that there'd be no development on Rash Field. And I was told there'd be no development south of Conway. But what about Rusty Scupper? It will also be in this sub-district C-51H. Rusty Scupper is not part of the park. Could there be an unlimited building put at the base of Federal Hill?
I don't know. Caitlin, is that building on public land?
I'd have to check, but it is in the U R P.
Definitely in the U R P.
And I believe it has a separate development area that would likely have a max height as well as other restrictions.
Is that in the Key Highway U R P?
No, it is in this U R P.
It is in this U R P.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about the urban renewal plan. I'm still talking about the zoning bill, which would be sub-district C-5-1H.
So everybody understands, so you understand, from a land use standpoint, that the zoning is one level of restriction. The urban renewal plan applies, provides additional restrictions above and beyond that. So the zoning may say you're able to do A through Z uses, you're able to do such and such a height. The urban renewal plan comes up over that and says... The urban renewal plan comes up over that and says, okay, now we're limiting your uses to these, i.e. taking out multifamily, and we're limiting your bulk regulations, your height setback and whatnot, to these. Zoning says it's 100 feet within the I H, C-5-I-H. Urban renewal plan says 50. Okay, so the urban, that's why the urban renewal plan is important in this discussion? One of the recommendations.
So I
All right, I did that on myself.
Mr. Chair, I think I have an answer on the Rusty Scupper. So my understanding is that while the U R P does cover the Rusty Scupper parcel, it is privately owned and there are separate height restrictions within, for that area within the U R P, and it's not part of what is known as the inner harbor park, not that any of us refer to it. Is that, I'll defer to my friends.
You're right, it's not in the inner harbor park, but it is within the C-5-I-H, and it's in the urban renewal plan.
But it is, but it is governed by the U R P, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, one reason why I bring this issue up as well is because I understand that planning has been very interested in moving away from the U R Ps and trying to incorporate as much of the U R P information into the zoning code, which makes me wonder, well, why don't we do that here? And separate these things out a little bit? So that's one of my concerns. I was very happy to hear support for robust traffic studies. I do believe that, you know, twice a day, there's a nightmare of traffic around this intersection, and that really needs to be thought through if we get rid of a lot more lanes. And so I think the only way to do that is with data, and I really support that, trying to get the best traffic studies we can. My last question is, what happens if the state money isn't forthcoming? I understand we have, what, 80 million coming from the state that Senator Ferguson was able to arrange, or a little, what, 76? But the developer said that ultimately, to make this project really work, we're going to need about 400 million. The state recently has been having to scale back some of its ambitions in some important areas that many of us cared about, in part because of emerging budget deficit. How will that emerging budget deficit affect the extra funds that we're going to need to make this project work and be successful? And so that's, I know this group doesn't deal with state budgeting, but that to me is our major question.
Director Ryer would like to address your question.
About $67 million was appropriated by the state in last year's fiscal year. Yes, you're right, they're having some problems right now, but I would assume they're short-term and won't be as long as the length of this project. We don't know all the transportation costs around this project, to be clear. We don't know at all.
Yeah, I think that's related. The budget issue, as I see it, is that, is the traffic problem, solving the traffic problems are going to require a massive amount of money. There may be ways of doing it by routing traffic up Charles Street or up, you know, other streets, but how are you going to deal with traffic going east-west, you know, if you don't use Pratt? So that's a real problem.
DOT has set aside some money, are proposed in their upcoming CIP, but what we're really waiting for is a decision by the MTA on the mode and alignment of the red line. We will start the traffic study after that.
Yeah, okay. And I think it's important to note that, you know, when we talk about the proposed red line and that kind of 14 or 15-mile stretch between Bayview Hopkins in the east and Woodlawn and Social Security Administration in the west, that that's a totally different funding mechanism, but when we've heard the figure of $400 million, that's why I thought it's important, context about what that 400 million would go to, and specifically how that would be funded, right? And like, when we talk about the promenade, and I want to take a moment to correct myself, I said that there were no state dollars for the promenade, there would be some state dollars, but primarily the federal government. So I think those sources are important in the larger context.
So real quick, I would add to you is, and I think it's important for everybody to recognize this, this project doesn't happen tomorrow. This project is probably a year or two, in reality, from a shovel being turned. And then from the date that that shovel's turned, it's a couple of years for completion. That's a, let's just say it's a three or four years period before, that's three capital improvement cycles. When the city does things, you know, major transportation projects, major DPW projects, we plan ahead and we fund these bit by bit by bit. Ideally, if things that we in this world were perfect, we would fund it all at once, but we don't have that kind of, you know, money allocated. So we fund it, we recognize we've got a big DPW project. We fund it this much this year, that much the next year, that much. So when it's time for them to pull the trigger on that and start, they've got the money. This is a multi-year development, it's not going to happen in tomorrow, and so it gives us the opportunity, and the state the opportunity, to build up the necessary funds to do certain improvements.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having this session in which we can comment on not only land use issues, but I think I didn't hear you say this time we couldn't comment on design issues. And I think, I think the
Tell us who you are.
I'm sorry. My name is Ted Rouse. I've lived all my life in Baltimore, the last 48 years in Baltimore City. I was a project manager partner in Schuber Brothers, Eccles, and Rouse. I was in charge of Tindeko and Canton Cove. And really first became aware even that we had this amazing waterfront when I first looked at the Tindeko 440,000-square-foot warehouse, which then became 240 apartments and 40,000 square feet of commercial space. And what I was truly amazed by was the vision of our mayor, Schaefer, in that he said, 20 feet of the waterfront is dedicated to the public for seven and a half miles around our inner harbor. And I was so impressed with that, that I took on the Baltimore Harbor Endowment as president and lobbied for and worked to create that seven-and-a-half-mile waterfront walkway. And I came to appreciate through that work that people love the waterfront. The water is magic. And what, you know, I love David Bramble, I love the fact that he is bold in his vision, I love $500 million being invested in our inner harbor, I think that's the kind of private investment we need. And yet, I'm worried about this plan, because I don't think this plan will draw the people to the waterfront in the way that Harbor Place did and the way that the Wharf does in D.C. And so I'm, I have five different points here, but I'm going to only read from one, since it's so late. The water is where the magic is. It's a natural magnet. Let's capitalize on it. In particular, the 60 feet between buildings fronting the waterfront and the water's edge is where people want to be. Emphasis should not be on non-waterfront parks further than 60 feet from the water or on view corridors for cars passing by. The emphasis should be on the space between the buildings and the water. The Wharf, a modern real estate development on D.C.'s southeast waterfront, is a great example of how that 60 feet can become magical when there are varied seating options and gathering places, and varied uses such as restaurants, shops, fountains, residential buildings, and hotels. There are many European waterfront cities, I spent, I lived in Spain for 12 years, that line their waterfront with, for, I'm sorry, 12 months, that line their waterfront with restaurants. We need a critical mass of destination locations along our water's edge. That might mean at least 12 restaurants, two hotels, three fountains that kids can jump in and out of, and one or more performance venues. Residential towers by themselves won't activate the waterfront. Bringing lots of people to the inner harbor waterfront 365 days a year should be our number-one goal in redeveloping Harbor Place. The concept of new urbanism revealed that so-called public-private space was an essential characteristic of successful small American towns. That space is often found on the front porches of houses that abut public sidewalks. In a similar way, waterfront restaurants would provide that space to Baltimore's beloved inner harbor promenade. A critical mass of such private space, public-private space in the subject properties should be required by any new land use provisions. I requested the planning commission votes to require a minimum of 50,000 square feet of restaurant use within 60 feet of the water's edge. The other, the other point I would make, and I know this is probably not the right forum, but we need a master plan for our inner harbor. We had the Charles Center Inner Harbor Management from 1965 to 1985, and that resulted in the Science Center, the Hyatt Hotel, Harbor Place, the aquarium, eventually the stadiums, the convention center. That, that, all those things didn't just happen, they happened because somebody woke up every morning thinking about, what is our master plan for our downtown waterfront and urban area? And how, what can I do today to make that, that master plan happen? It's a quasi-Church Center Inner Harbor management, was a quasi-public-private corporation empowered by the mayor to do just that. And that's what we need now to do. We need, we need to think about a gondola to move people from the stadiums and convention centers to the inner harbor. We need to think, we need to think about a bridge that would cross, there's, one's been designed, but we should have an international design competition for that bridge and help make it a 30-minute walk to circumnavigate the harbor. Those are just two of many ideas that we need. And so this is a pitch to anybody that can have influence with our mayor to think about doing that now, so that we don't feel like we're being rushed into something as we, I think many of us feel here. I do think that, that the developer and UDAP should come to some kind of agreement before these land use changes are made. I realize there's a time clock ticking, but we don't, we don't want a failure at the location of Harbor Place. And even if I have to wait two more years, it'd be worth it. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much, Mr. Rouse.
Terrell Brooks, youth advocate for Sharp Litten Hall. So, Mr. Rouse spoke about it being magical. I'm gonna say that I was told that it was magical. When I was a kid growing up, I heard how magical it was from my grandmother and them, they talked about slavery in the inner harbor. One of the things she talked about a lot, she talked about how maybe Wayne's barbecue or someone was there, how they helped her out, and all those things. I'll say we get an opportunity now to make this moment magical again. And I'm saying "we" because we all get an opportunity to do this. And whatever our differences is, we get an opportunity to kind of be at the table to say, listen. Well, he said no first, Will, but we do get an opportunity to kind of go and do some of those things where we can come together. I think this is the perfect time for us to come together as Baltimoreans, right? To really, right now, I mean, how many of you guys here have those moments at the inner harbor? That's what you got to think about, that moment at the inner harbor that you had, that special moment for you. Think of that place. Think of that place where as though right now you get to have that moment again. How many of you guys don't even tend the harbor now, because of what it looked like or what is going on now at the inner harbor? But think if you get to have that moment back, your first love, where you get to come down and say, you know what, I remember us at this spot. You're going to be new builders and all, but guess what, you create those new memories. Again, I'd say you guys just take the time to like, really, like even if you dislike it, take the time to really sit and think of that moment that you had at the inner harbor, and how much that you loved it. I don't know, yeah, when they had the birthday party, but again, I'm saying let's have another birthday party down in the harbor where we enjoy it. I don't know if we're going to have a boat with the choir on there, but I'm saying let's bring it back and let's do those things. Again, listen, it's right now for us, the city of Baltimore, it's going to take all us to come together and make these things happen. You're saying like, no matter what, we have to come together and fight for this, right? So if you do have a difference and all that, I'm saying take the time to go and sit with Dave and talk to him. You're saying like, he's open to talk. Talk to him, talk to her, like, do some of those things. I ain't going to tell all the architect stuff about it, but I'm just saying like, just straight from the heart, like, talk. Say what's on your mind. You're saying like, and again, you'll have a part in it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. I'm sorry, did I jump on that too quickly? Deliberations, discussions amongst the commission.
I would, I want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing and listening. I also remember, you know, vividly a lot of the testimony that we received three weeks ago. And this idea of urgency keeps coming up, what's the rush? And some of us, to some, and I'm putting myself in that category, do feel that there's a rush, that there's an urgency. I've also noticed something I think is interesting, which is an age gap in some of the perceptions with, with a few exceptions of some seniors that came out tonight in support of the plan. It seems like a lot of older folks remember the old Harbor Place and are resistant to new ideas. At the same time, a lot of folks, younger folks, have only seen Harbor Place in its current state of disrepair and are really anxious for something new that we all deserve. When, you know, the time is a funny thing, and every, you know, this project is going to take five years at a minimum to implement, best case. It could be longer. And in that time, an entire generation of children, an entire another generation of our youth is going to miss out on the opportunity to create those memories that so many of you are clinging to from your own youth. So I think it's just really important that we keep that in mind. And again, on the timing thing, the election cycle as a, you know, impetus for pushing this through the council has been mentioned, you know. The residents and the voters are going to have the final say on this, and that's really important. And this year being a presidential and mayoral election year means we're going to have the most voters out at the polling locations. So I think that is another reason for us to push this forward and make sure that the most voters have a say on it next year.
Any other comments? Yes, all right, let's just go around, and I think Commissioner Collins?
I just wanted to, I was thinking about when we, three weeks ago, when we were discussing this very issue and listening to people, that my colleague, Commissioner Allen, said something that I thought was very thoughtful. She and I are not the focus of this development. This is the focus of the future of this area. This is a focus on our youth and young adults and some of the people who spoke very passionately, who are going to have an opportunity to be part of what will happen for this redevelopment. I think that touched me the most, that people are already being considered, they're being part of it now, they're young, they're entrepreneurs, they're from Baltimore. This is really important. It's not only a destination, it really needs to be supporting our communities and welcoming everyone. This is important for us. And this is a sacred area for many people, and water is usually part of that feeling. And I think that one of the things we have to consider is, this process will be long. And I think that one of the things we have to consider is this process will be long. And it is for our future, for our inclusionary community, for people who are giving, going to be given tremendous opportunity as we heard this evening. So I, I just felt compelled to say that because I thought what you had said, Rob, and last, the last time we met was just so impactful. So, thank you.
All right, so let's go, Commissioner McCouch?
Very quickly, I've spent most of my professional career doing waterfront master planning both around the world, in Indonesia, Japan, and Korea, and Saudi Arabia, but also in the States, in Cleveland, Rhode Island, New York City, and ultimately as close as Westport. And there are a couple, well, one thing that I believe is completely true, is that cities around the world meet the water in different ways. There isn't one universal approach, nor should there be. And part of that, I think, that leads me to, to consider that what we define as a park at the city's central waterfront is gonna continue to evolve, appropriately so. We have rising sea levels. We have a completely different strategy toward transportation, and that will continue to change. And I think it's important to accept that we are planning for the future, and then the future will plan for its future. I view this as a generational opportunity for the citizens of Baltimore. And I actually have to say that I'm, I don't, I don't know that the master plan, in fact, I'm pretty certain the master plan isn't, isn't really gelled yet, but I think that it's a, it's a reasonable start to, to raise important topics for our community. I'll say I don't think this is about MCB in the least. It could be other developers, there may be partners, but I think we should be thrilled to have a local developer at the forefront of this. That's a big deal for our city. And I think that we would have a very different conversation if we had an out-of-town developer coming in. But I left the first meeting with a lot of concerns about the master plan. I mean, that's, that's what I think about, the form and the character and the functioning of urban places. I still have those concerns. But then I went home, and I suggest folks do review the UDAP minutes, the UDAP minutes, excuse me, because all of my concerns about uses, height, permeability and visibility through the waterfront, the public activation of civic space, these were actually all of the concerns of the UDAP panel. I actually finished that review, and this is two hours, 40 minutes and 18 seconds. And I was, I was really, I was impressed because people are thinking about things that from a lot of your comments are significant. Like, I have a problem with no height limits, okay? No height limits isn't a height limit. But I am very comfortable with the idea that there's a master planning process going on today that will be coming before this commission in the future, which needs to address these, these open-ended questions. How high should we go? Is 400,000 square foot of office under the guise of an allowed commercial use, which we used to know as two stories of retail? Is that the right amount? Is it in the right location? These are things which are form-based on physical considerations, and I'm really happy as a person who's presented to UDAP and found projects that were improved through the process. I'm very happy that we have this sort of ongoing exercise with the master plan underway. I have to say that related to the First Amendment and the use of, and the introduction of residential, I, I personally, having seen it function in many, many places, I don't think residential uses are antithetical to the notion of a park in any way. In fact, I think they, in many places, and the Wharf is an example, but Brooklyn, New York, the Brooklyn waterfront, these are places where residential development really contributes to the waterfront. So as much as I have a concern about the evolution of this plan, I'm, I'm satisfied that we have a process in place that can start to address this. And as much as I would imagine a city could have prepared itself for the eventuality of redeveloping Harbor Place, I accept that we're on a different path and that we have the people and the tools necessary to move the dialogue forward. So as all of this is really with regard to a referendum in the fall, I think I would have to advise that the developer, who's a heck of a good developer, and Gensler's a heck of a good team, and all of the, the professionals, I need them in order to, to feel good about this master plan review at, at the planning commission, I need them to listen hard and make, make tough decisions about how much, how much do we need and where should it be and how will it work? And only after UDAP could be satisfied would I wanna have this come before the planning commission. In fact, my worst nightmare is that we're sitting here in a couple months, and we're trying to make changes as a planning commission to the master plan. Terrible, terrible outcome. So I would just say that let's, well, I personally am comfortable with the process. I'm also comfortable with the amendments, but I'm putting a great deal of responsibility on the department and the design review process in order to deliver, deliver a solution which works for all of us. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Allen?
I will save time and just say I echo the expressions of my colleagues who have spoken thus far, and particularly Commissioner Stevenson, and thank you, Commissioner Collins, because you actually said it better than I did.
Deputy Mayor, Williams?
I think I share what Commissioner Stevenson said about the urgency of thinking about, like, one of my fondest memories, my earliest memory, as a three-year-old, my brother was born, was going to the inner harbor with my dad to pass the time in the electric boats and hanging out. And so I've been sad to see the decline of the harbor the past couple decades. And that in my mind is the driver for the urgency, thinking about what Governor Moore always says about the, this is Maryland's moment and Baltimore's time, or vice versa, Baltimore's moment, Maryland's time. And I think it is, the stars are aligning, we're lucky that we have friends in the White House, in the State House to help the city and that, to focus on city governance. And we saw the news last week about our GDP growth already happening for 2022, and really, I think the city's really primed for a lot of exciting things to happen if we go forward now. I'd push back if people say we're going too quickly, like, the referendum itself will be a year from now, and that's the referendum plus council hearings. And that'll just be a referendum, there'll be future hearings and public forums and approvals necessary for the project going forward. Regarding the residential piece and the concerns about privatization, I don't see how a Hooters is more or less privatization than residential in my mind, or like, how, how excludes a public, or excludes like, kind of the vision of what a public park could be. Regarding the, yeah, and that's what Commissioner McCouch mentioned, I think we are lucky that we have a local developer who does care. That's what led Amanda Mack to come out. It's like, that made me teary-eyed too, the fact that someone local did care and take the time to do this. We're lucky because the existing ground lease in place that the MCB took over was until, I wrote it down, 2087. So there's a 75-year ground lease from the Rouse Companies entity that, that had assumed by Ashkenazi, and then Ashkenazi had it in place till 2087. So another developer could have come in and taken it, and we'd have no partner necessarily. So we're lucky as a city to have someone who has the local ties and does care and does doing, going above and beyond to make this project work. So we do appreciate that. And I think that's one other thing to point out, the ground lease part, the entire harbor, I looked up while we're sitting here, from the aquariums to power plant, all the way around to Russ's Cupper are ground lease parcels with the city. So the city has control. So in the event that there wouldn't, this project didn't proceed, or the MCB would drop out for some reason, there are ground lease controls to prevent some of the development from happening. So the ground lease will control what happens and the footprints and what uses can be there. So that gives me more comfort and should give the public more comfort. And regarding the height, it's also kind of what I mentioned with Commissioner Stevenson on the Charles Village Plan, between 100 and 300, it's a practical matter from the ground, I don't see a practical impact. In my mind, it's about pedestrian focus and the pedestrian experience. And as a practical matter, the buildings being blocked are a hotel, the Hyatt, and no one else. And so everyone is objecting on behalf of the Hyatt, which is nice, but like, just the Hyatt and the parking garage, by the way. And so in my mind, those objections, you know, I, for those reasons, I would support the legislation.
Great. Commissioner Horn?
I, I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think there, there is a difference between sort of economic development and equitable development, and I just wanna give a particular appreciation for David and his team for equitable development, where voices were heard, a process, a community engagement was prioritized. I think this is an excellent example of that. I think there are two things I would just wanna bring up. I think the traffic study keeps on coming up, and so I would like sort of a defined timeline of when that would occur and, and who would be responsible for that. The second piece is throughout this proposal, there's a removal of sort of ad hoc advisory task force or removal of this separate task force. And I would like some discussion about sort of the public process of this proposed project, and when public testimony and input is, is requested, how, how that occurs. I think in, in, in the staff report, you said we, we need to think about that. And so I just, I, I didn't know if there were any recommendations, but I think you, you have a project where, whatever way we, we, we go about voting for this moving forward, I think there needs to be a mechanism so residents feel a part of, of that project, of this process and have a voice.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's thoughtful input. I've definitely taken everything into consideration. I think first I would like to acknowledge and appreciate Councilman Costello's extensive constituent interaction. It's been great to see and lovely to be a part of this team with you, and you have extensive clarity on these bills that helped me really think these through today. The great thing about going close to last is I get to echo everybody else's sentiment, and specifically the one about Harbor Place being the future of Baltimore and the future for the entrepreneurs here. So I'd like to thank you for that and say that I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Councilman Costello?
We'll be brief.
No.
First, I wanna echo everything I heard from my colleagues on the commission. Second, we really took to heart Commissioner Horn's comment about the, the bullet on, on UDAP and, and how we handle that moving forward. And I'd like to ask the development team and the planning department to, to get together in the coming weeks, it can wait till January, but I wanna ask you all to get together and, and let's iron this out, and let's iron it out in a way that, that makes everyone feel comfortable, so that that process is effective moving forward. And then two, one overarching comment and then a thank you. There is a sense of urgency here. There has to be a sense of urgency here. When we look at what is, what has been happening in Baltimore City, we, we have some existential crises and, and we have challenges. And there, there are great folks that are doing wonderful work, the Downtown Partnership, the Waterfront Partnership, when we think about the core of, of downtown, but there's a lot of work remaining. And we do have to act with a sense of urgency, and we have to act with that sense of urgency with our children in mind and our next generation in mind, because ultimately, this is what we're gonna leave to them. That said, we cannot compromise community engagement and input from the public. That cannot be compromised. And, and as, as long as I'm the councilman in the 11th district, I, I'm telling you that's gonna happen, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to engage with the community in a meaningful and a thoughtful way. And that's, when Dave and I first talked about this project, it was very clear about that's what the expectation was, was to set the bar in terms of community engagement because of how important this project is, but more importantly, how important this location is and what it means to every person in our city. And finally, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who stayed engaged in this process. My hope is that you're gonna continue to stay engaged, that whether we agree or disagree, you're gonna continue to provide input to help make this better for everyone and better for our city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I also wanna echo the thank you to everybody who has appeared over the last six hours for this particular agenda item to provide us your input. I wanna thank the planning department, planning staff, specifically Caitlin, for doing a really phenomenal job at boiling down very complex and complicated issues to, to present to us and present to the public. And I also wanna thank the applicant for your commitment and, and for being here. For a lot about process, process is a matter of perspective. Depending upon which perspective you take, you either, there's never enough, or there's too much. I am pretty sure that over the next year or two, there's going to be a hell of a process to protect, I think, the citizens of Baltimore, to make sure that this is a great project for all of us. I also think in reviewing all the details of all the documents, that there are plenty of safeguards in the urban renewal plan to protect the absolutely essential nature of the inner harbor, which is public access to the harbor. If you look at all of the diagrams, there is very clear guidelines and requirements to maintain that public access. That's not going away. Hopefully, it's being revived to something that we can all be very proud of. And finally, you know, character really does matter, and character is based on your actions. And there's one thing that I'm really, really comfortable with, is that we have an applicant who is doing this that is absolutely committed to the city. If you look at the development projects that MCB is doing and the neighborhoods they're doing them in, Northwood Commons, Yard 56, Madison Park, redevelopment of Madison Park, and many others that I have no, no idea about, and what they're invested in, there is a true commitment to the city, which tells me, and the fact that Mr. Bramble continues to live in the neighborhood where he grew up, is a, is a, it's a measure of his character, which I believe is impeccable, and to me, that matters a hell of a lot. So with that, do we have a motion? And we, we will handle these individually. So, yes, Councilman? Really?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval
Oh, good.
... of the department's recommendation with one caveat, and that is around the, the UDAP issue, the fourth bullet point, that planning and the developer will, will get together in the coming weeks and, and months to sort that out.
All right, so let's do this, if we can, just to perfect the record. Let's just go by each city council bill individually, starting with Council Bill Number 23-0444, which is the charter amendment, inner harbor park. I don't think that there was any specific amendments to that particular
No amendments, no.
No amendments to that. So we have the findings of fact that were presented in the staff report for that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, just, just before that motion, just to get clarification, the, the creation of the waterfront overlay, that's, that's more of a, I'm assuming that's intended to be more of a, a larger discussion when we think about the water in general and not specific to these actions, correct?
Yeah, more of a request from the planning commission for the department to explore and pursue as we update the zoning code.
So that, I actually, I think that's in a, that's in a, a recommendation that comes with the second bill 0446 on the zoning. So we're just dealing with, let's just deal with the inner harbor, the charter amendment, if we can, 23044, charter amendment for the inner harbor. There was no proposed amendments by the planning staff. There was a recommendation for approval by the planning staff with findings of fact. Do I have a motion?
Motion, move approval Move, move approval with finding of facts.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Williams, Mr. Secretary of General.
Robin Allen.
Approve.
Marsha Collins.
Approve.
Eric Costello.
Approve.
Khalib Horn.
Approve.
Claudia Jolyn.
Approve.
Doug McCouch.
Approve.
Justin Williams.
Approve.
Eric Stevenson.
Approve.
Sean Davis.
Approve. That measure will now go before the residents of the city, or actually, first it'll go to the city council, and assuming to the city council, and assuming it's going to be approved there, then it'll go residents. Next, we have City Council Bill 23-0446, which is the zoning C5 IH Inner Harbor Subdistrict Amendment. If you can, go back to the proposed amendments.
There are no proposed amendments for that. The only amendments I have are for the urban renewal plan, but then I did have the recommendation for the waterfront overlay.
So do I have a motion to approve, City Council, to recommend approval of City Council Bill 23-0446 with the recommendation that the planning department look into the waterfront overlay district to one day replace the urban renewal plan and modify the zoning?
So moved.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Repeat the, can you please repeat the last statement, the waterfront overlay district to replace?
The eventual.
The urban, yeah, the urban renewal plan.
The intent is to eventually replace it, but we'd have to work with BDC to make sure that there are no issues with that.
So just to be clear, we're not recommending that action be taken, we're just recommending that planning explore that and come back.
Correct.
Motion made, Mr. Chair.
I think it was made by Collins, it'll be seconded by.
It can second it.
Okay. Mr. Secretary?
Robin Allen.
Approve.
Marsha Collins.
Approve.
Eric Costello.
Approve.
Talib Horn.
Approve.
Claudia Jolyn.
Approve.
Doug McCouch.
Approve.
Justin Williams.
Approve.
Eric Stevenson.
Approve.
John Davis.
Approve. Finally, we have City Council Bill 23-0448, Urban Renewal, Inner Harbor Project 1, Amendment 21. And there are six proposed amendments to this particular piece of legislation that are up on our board right now, so.
The developer's attorney wanted to word Smith, I don't know if that needs to happen here versus.
I think that's the same one that the councilman wants to word.
That's correct.
Which is the fourth bullet point regarding the design review process. And so I think that one, maybe we, how do you want to handle it? Do we just say, okay, let's, you know, push that back onto planning and the council member and planning and the applicant to work out that language prior to your city council?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the staff report with all of the amendments, with the exception of Amendment Number Four, with the understanding that the development team and the planning department will be getting together in the coming weeks to begin that important discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Horn. Mr. Secretary, will you call?
Robin Allen.
Approve.
Marsha Collins.
Approve.
Eric Costello.
Approve.
Talib Horn.
Approve.
Claudia Jolyn.
Approve.
Doug McCouch.
Approve.
Justin Williams.
Approve.
Eric Stevenson.
Approve.
John Davis.
Thank you all very, very much. Oh, yeah, approve. Thank you all very, very much for being here. We, that's eight and a half hours we were here, I think that's probably our longest ever. I wish everybody a wonderful holiday. We'll see you in the new year. And that's it. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All those favorite eyes. Everybody have a great holiday.